Are you ready? Yes. Personnel said they're taking another pledge of allegiance. I sign them. Everybody ready?
Yep.
Councillors? We need to get going. I'd like to call this September fifteenth session of the Hoyoke City Council to order the clerk will call the roll and record those members present.
Alexander Bartley.
Here.
Bresnahan.
Here.
Shatner.
Here.
Graney.
Jordane.
Here.
Leahy.
Present.
Lebron Martinez.
Here.
Lisi.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
McGivern.
Here.
Soto.
Tallman.
Here.
Bacon.
Here.
Valentine.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city council.
Counselors, first item that we have on the agenda is an item that was laid on the table from a prior meeting, that is a report from the Committee on Ordinance regarding changes to Section two dash thirty-five related to classification and compensation plans. Counselor Lebron Martinez.
Before we proceed, can we take a moment of silence for Mr. Higgins? He was actually one of my mentors twenty-five years ago, and I would love to take this opportunity, if that's okay with the...
Okay, I was gonna put that later in the meeting, but we can do that now if you prefer. Okay, all right. Counselors, as we know and members of the audience, last Thursday, we lost a sixteen-year veteran member of the city council, an esteemed citizen, all-around wonderful person, and our very own Patrick J. Higgins. Pat was a great guy, served the city for many, many years as a police officer in other capacities, and he will be deeply missed, and we should at this time take a moment of silence for Pat's memory. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item one. Hearing no motions, we move to public comment. Public comment, we have four citizens who have signed up to speak at public comment today. The first one is Bill Bevan of eighteen Gilman Street. Bill, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is William Bevan, and I live at eighteen Gilman Street. I am the former chairman of the Soldiers Memorial Commission. Mr. Transparency Mayor Morse never discussed the cutting of the war memorial budget with his commissioners and his plan to move the veterans' agent to City Hall. I'm here to let you and the veterans of Hoyoke know why I'm opposed to this. Moving the veterans' agent would mean the sixty or so veterans would have to sign in weekly at the City Hall. They would lose their privacy and their convenience. Many of these veterans are elderly and handicapped. I get a little nervous in public speaking. The War Memorial Building would be closed to the public on daily basis. Without maintenance personnel and a budget for repairs, the flooding of the basement and the leaking of the roof would go unchecked, eventually causing permanent and extensive damage, not to mention the daily upkeep of the interior and the exterior. In closing, I ask the council to do what they can to keep the veterans' agent at the War Memorial and urge the veterans of Hoyoke to tell the mayor to restore the budget so the building can be preserved and enjoyed for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. We appreciate that information.
If you have any questions, I gladly answer them.
Okay, great, thank you. We'll be in touch. I'm sure we can file an order to have you come down and we can have a further discussion. Thank you for that, Bill. Our next guest that signed up is Jose Bowe. Jose owns a very nice restaurant located over at three ninety-two High Street. Jose, welcome.
Thank you, and the last name is Bowe.
Bowe.
Yes.
I'll do my best.
That's okay, that's all.
Thank you.
I know the pronunciation is not the most important thing that is happening here today. Let me tell you something, number one, I really, really understand that your jobs are so complicated, and there's a lot of people in Hoyoke and in this region that do not understand the kind of work that you guys put into. I couldn't do it, so I really admire you guys for taking time. And I'm not trying to be nice, but every time I sit here, I say the same thing. You know, if I was a city council, it would be like so much work for you, for a person. I couldn't do it. Let me just tell you that I'm the owner of Sal Zarenga Restaurant. Sal Zarenga Restaurant, three ninety-two High Street. While all of you in America think right now, what were you doing on nine eleven? All of you remember, right? I remember that I was driving from another university, making a presentation, and then they told us, "All the universities are closed, you gotta go home." On my way home to the University of Massachusetts where I retired from, I was just gonna say, you know, what's gonna happen? But I remember where I was and what I was thinking on my way to the university, which was closed that day. And then twelve eleven, two thousand and fourteen, that's when the Essex Building collapsed. And to me, that's another thing that is in my mind all the time and in my heart. When I heard the crumble of the bricks, I called nine-one-one. And then I had to explain my name, pronouncing my last name. Well, how do you pronounce your last? I don't know. B-O-U. Just send somebody, respond. I used to work for, you know, people, and I know when you need to tell people, "Respond", we have an emergency. And we had an emergency and stuff like that, and, you know, the building collapsed, and we were closed for two and a half months. And I know you guys have your hands full, but we haven't had any response from the city. The city, the legal department, I don't know whom, is supposed to pay us back because you guys own the building. And I know that there was this controversy of, and I agree with you now, then we talk about safety, right? But we were saying, I know that, you know, that we should go after this guy that owned this building, and he's out of here, but he wasn't here, okay? And the same thing is gonna happen again to a lot of people who own buildings in Hoyoke, all right? But right now, there's no response, and I need to know when and how and at what time, what should I do on my end? People say, you know, get a lawyer, sue the city, but I wanna go another way. And let me tell you something, in two thousand and five, I opened my business in Hoyoke. People told me that I was crazy. I retired in two thousand and three, and I say, "Hoyoke? You're gonna open a business in Hoyoke?" And Sal Zarenga, three ninety-two High Street, right there, that was a hole in the wall. That wasn't a place. It was opening and closing, opening and closing. On October tenth this year, we're gonna celebrate our anniversary. Actually, I hope that some of you show up. You know, it's a good thing for election, a lot of people who are running, they always go there. Thank you for all of you who have gone there and say, "Hey, how is it going?", you know? It's still like you feel in prison because you don't know. You know, a lot of people call and say, "Oh, your business is closed", whatever, but I know that some of the people that are here tonight with me and, you know, they say, you know, "What are you gonna say?". I say, "I really don't know. I just hope that at some point you put this on the agenda, that you guys need to respond". This is two blocks away from this beautiful building and the City Hall and the center, you know, of Hoyoke, but it looks like Gaza Strip. It looks like a war-torn area, and I don't know if it's because we are Puerto Rican and you don't feel like we deserve anything. I served in the military, defending your freedom, like many of you have done, you know what I'm saying? And I feel that I came here in nineteen seventy-five, and I was coming to a great place, and I moved here because there was a lot of Latinos, especially Puerto Rican people, and I made my place here. My first son was born here, I went to Hoyoke Community College, then I went to UMass, and here, I'm back. And I'm not getting any answers, any support and stuff like that, and I don't wanna be like crying for it, but it is a place that is right here in downtown. And while I see all of this work that is going on on High Street, you know, we have a bus stop, we have a train station, we have a canal walk, we have a whole bunch of other stuff, but the people who are here in this block, a few blocks from here, we're not making it. I thought about closing the business, and I stay open because a lot of people say, "Oh, come on, you know, let's do it, let's hustle up", but it's getting hard. So, you know, I'm not asking for much, but eventually, I know you got your hands full, but if something in the agenda that we can discuss, I will appreciate it. And let me tell you something, I'm not the only one, but I don't know if people don't wanna speak about the issues that they have and the problems, but that sector got hit hard. Twelve eleven is in my mind. Thank you, and I don't wanna take more than two minutes because I know you're gonna criticize me at some point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Our next speaker up is Ed Hurley of seventy-two Lower Westfield Road, and I don't know if Ed and Mary wanna both come up at the same time, or...
It has nothing to do with this.
You could speak on any topic you basically want, we don't have a set. Yep, and Mary is with you. All right, so Ed and Mary Hurley of seventy-two Lower Westfield Road, go ahead, Ed.
Counselor Bresnahan has filed an order on our behalf, hopefully, to limit truck traffic during the evening and overnight hours on Lower Westfield Road. It's become an exit ramp to ninety-one, to Main Street and Route Five. We have a very narrow bridge on Lower Westfield Road. During the day, there are children that walk up and down the hill to Dean Vocational School, and we have fifty-three, fifty-four-foot tractor-trailer trucks running up and down the hill all day, all night, and we just need some help. Every other street in the city of Hoyoke has a sign that has a little truck and a arrow through it, and we'd like one.
Sure, okay. Well, we thank Counselor Bresnahan for being on top of that, to file that. Mary, did you wanna add anything to that, or...
Yes, I just wanna say it's not only truck commercial, but it's local traffic. There's approximately ten houses between the corner of Wedding Farms Road and Holy Family Road, continuing down Lower Westfield Road. There's a minimal of fifty cars that go by in an hour, and they're coming from all directions. I don't know where they're going, but the traffic is bad, and it's just gonna get worse with the shopping plaza up the street. So, last week, five AM, you know, house shakes, there's a hood truck, tractor-trailer coming down Holy Family Road. Where's it coming from? I can only speculate. What's he doing there? I don't know. But this is a cut-through, we followed a truck once down the street. It's a danger, not only a nuisance, but it's just, again, we just ask fairness to every other neighborhood that has commercial trucks, if you could just give us the same consideration. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So, the only thing I'll add at this point, just so people don't have to wait around for the president's report, I did wanna, and I did mention to Jose previously, that I had an opportunity to speak to the mayor on his concern about some movement about the other building that's there next and what's gonna happen in terms of the future, is I know the mayor said they did not have anything yet for us for a proposal to resolve that, but we're supposed to be getting something pretty soon, hopefully, for our consideration. Just so you know, we don't have anything in front of us, any appropriations to spend money have to start with the mayor's office, and I'm told there's supposed to be something coming soon and some final resolution on the ultimate likely demolition of the other building that's right next because of the state that it's been in. So, I know that the mayor's office and legal and whatnot are working through all those issues, so he told me he would have something as soon as possible to have for our consideration. And I know there is a strong desire to, I was told, to hold the demolition company responsible for its portion of any of the damages that were done. So, that's the best I can give you for a report, and I know I've already delivered that personally, but for the benefit of some of the other people that have come with you as well, okay? All right, well, we thank our guests for coming and speaking, and now that brings us to communications and...
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Valentine?
Could we suspend the rules and take item seventeen B out of order because they're in the public?
Okay. Seventeen B on my agenda is regarding the Mike Albano item?
Nope, it's the Kevin Tomlinson for non-conforming use.
Oh, there's a new agenda? Okay. Okay. Seventeen B, thank you. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up item number seventeen B now. Item number seventeen B relates to a Mr. Kevin Tomlinson for a non-conforming use at sixteen Maple Street.
coming soon, and some final resolution on the ultimate likely demolition of the other building that's right next, 'cause of the state that it's been in. So, I know that they're, the mayor's office and legal and whatnot are working through all those issues. So, he told me he would have something as soon as possible to, to have for our consideration. And I know there is a strong desire to, I was told, to hold the demolition company responsible for its portion of any of the damages that were done. So, that, that's the best I can give you for a report, and I know I've already delivered that personally, but for the benefit of some of the other people that have come with you as well. Okay? All right, well, we thank our, our guests for coming and speaking, and now that brings us to communications.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel Valentine?
Could we suspend the rules and take Item 17B out of order, because they're in the public?
Okay. 17B on my agenda is regarding Mike, the Mike Albano item?
Uh, nope. It's the Kevin Tomlinson for non-conforming use.
Oh, there's a new agenda? Okay. Okay. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up Item Number 17B now. Item Number 17B relates to a Mr. Kevin Tomlinson for a non-conforming use at 16 Maple Street. All in favor suspending the rules to take up this item now?
Aye.
Opposed? So, moved. 17B. 17B is a committee report from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom is referred a special permit application of Mr. Kevin Tomlinson for a non-conforming use to be located at 16 Maple Street, Hoyoak. The committee has considered the same and recommend that the order be adopted under the condition that the building meets the necessary criteria to be utilized. And this was signed off by Councillors Bartley, McGivern, LeBrow Martinez, and Valentine. I'll turn it over at this point to the chairman, Mr. Bartley, for a motion.
Well, just give me two seconds, give my, if I know, just give me taking an order, I would have...
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to be courteous to Mr. Tomlinson, 'cause he's sitting here.
That's all, all good. I just wanted to give you a heads up, that's all. Okay.
So, sorry about that, but we just have an agenda for a reason, but it's okay. So, I guess a motion to accept a committee report and grant a special permit for the property?
Yep. Motion on the floor is to receive the committee report, to adopt it, and to grant the special permit to Mr. Kevin Tomlinson for this non-conforming use to be located at 16 Maple Street. Under discussion, the chairman, Mr. Bartley.
Just gotta get a second for that, but...
Can I get a sec? I mean, I'm sorry, second, I'm second.
Seconded.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, this, this is a, this is kinda, so this is the, the new world that, that's for, for this committee, right? Granting special permits, they don't change ordinances. So, we had a, a really excellent committee hearing, and everybody on the committee, I wanna thank them, 'cause they all participated, and, and it was a long meeting last night, a good three-hour-plus meeting, and everybody really pitched in, and I wanna just personally thank, thank them right here and now. Mr. Tomlinson is, applied for a special permit for a property at 16 Maple, and just to orient the committee and the public, 16 Maple is the very end of Maple, the north end of Maple Street, behind Monte de la Rosa Church, near Monte de la Rosa School, and, at the back end, and there's a cul-de-sac there, a, a turnaround, if you will. So, it's really at the, almost the most northern point of the, of the city. So, there's a building back there that was a funeral home, and under, and really, he was assisted by the planning board, under, under planning rules in Chapter 48, the city can grant what's called a special permit for a non-conforming structure. Now, let's not go into that, but let's just go into the heart of this thing. So, Mr. Tomlinson owns a company called Mary Maids. It's located on North Hampton Street, he's leasing currently right there. He's owned the business for a little less than a year, but he's managed the business in some capacity or another for about seven years. There are 15 employees. So, Mr. Tomlinson came down last night with his, with his, a real estate agent, and, and they told us what's been happening at the building, which is, I mean, it's, it's got about, it's got issues. He says he needs about six months to, to rehab it, repair it, and the intent is to keep the business in Hoyoak, but for him to no longer be a lessee, for him to be a property owner. All that being said, there were no issues with zoning, the section under Chapter 48 was, hit the nail on the head, he complied all the way through, and based upon that, and he gave a good presentation, the committee didn't have any special recommendations, unless Joe wants to correct me on that one. I, I didn't write any down. So, I think based upon his application and presentation last night, the committee recommended 5-0 to recommend to this board to grant a special permit.
Any other discussion? Yeah, Counsel Valentine?
Thank you. And my intention was not to throw Counselor Bartley off guard here, I just, I saw Mr. Tomlinson sitting in the audience, and I figured, why have him sit longer than he needed to? So, sorry for taking that out of order, but just thinking about the public for a minute. So, one of the things that, one of the conversations that took place while Mr. Tomlinson was here for the special permit was that Mrs. Rex, was it Rex?
Linda.
Yeah, Mrs. Rex came from the school, from the MD School, and communicated some of her concerns, and Mr. Tomlinson pretty much agreed to, you know, listen to the concerns that she had, and, and it was pretty clear that, I think it's things that they can work out. So, just wanted to mention that, because she did come in and have some, had a statement for us in terms of what her concerns were, and she's also gonna work on some of the safety issues around that area with her ward counselor, which is Counselor LeBrow Martinez. So, that was the only concern that came up, and, and it was addressed at the moment. Thank you.
Okay. I saw Counsel Lahey's hands up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Unfortunately, we had a finance meeting going on at the same time, so I wasn't able to come. I think I caught the tail end of it, but if I could through the chair to Joe, Counsel Valentine, was Mrs. Rex forward or against it? Did she lean one way or the other?
Can I respond? So, her concerns were mainly the Mary Maids vehicles, and how many were there, and how much traffic was there gonna be, and she actually went into detail about what the mornings looked like there in terms of, you know, parking, and so, a lot of that was pretty much discussed. So, she just, I think she wanted to make sure that, she, she made a statement about how she's supportive of a business being there, obviously, this is a building that's been vacant at least 10 years, but she wanted to make sure that we knew what her concerns were in terms of parking, traffic, things like that.
Good, okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Counsel Shatner?
Just add to that, I talked to Mrs. Rex at drop-off this morning, and she's fine with it, as long as it doesn't become a safety issue.
Okay.
Counsel LeBrow Martinez?
Yes. Tonight, we'll see some late orders due to the hearing and, and her concerns about the safety and all, so I, I've already filed those orders, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, anything else? All right, hearing none. There's no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report and granting the special permit, a no vote is to deny it.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander, Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatner?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lahey?
Yes.
LeBrow Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your unanimous vote, you have approved the special permit for Mr. Tomlinson. We wish him well.
President?
Yes, Counsel LeBrow Martinez?
With, with the maker, or the chair of the committee, if that okay for us to also take out of order 17A, since we have also the Mr. Albeiro, who was part of the hearing last night, and the owner of the company, so we can really get this through. Yep.
This is regarding outdoor sales lot at 9 Avon?
Yes, 17A, yes. They're here, I believe the owner is here, was he, yeah, he's here, and that's what we've been pending on, so if, it's okay.
Okay. All right. Motion on, I must, okay, motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up Item Number 17A now. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, moved. Item Number 17A is a report from the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom is referred a special permit application for an outdoor sales lot for new and used motor vehicles and trucks, and marine and recreational vehicle establishment to be located at 9 Avon Place, Hoyoak, to be owned by Mr. Angel Abuelo. Have considered the same, recommend that the order has been complied with under the condition that a maximum of 21 parking spaces be provided. This is signed off by Councillors Bartley, LeBrow Martinez, and Valentine. Counsel Bartley?
Yeah, a motion to receive, adopt the committee report and to grant a special permit.
Okay. Motion's been made, and seconded, to receive and adopt the committee report and to grant a special permit. This is interesting wording on the committee jacket, though. It says that the order's been complied with under the condition that a maximum, shouldn't it be that you're asking that the special permit be granted?
Yes.
In terms of the wording of that? So, okay, so maybe an amendment to the committee recommendation, recommended that the special permit be granted under the condition that a maximum of 21 parking spaces be provided?
So, moved.
Second.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So, moved. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Okay. So, Mr. Bale came on July 28th, we continued it till last night, 9:14. On July 28th, he, the presentation he provided was, was, was a good one, it was an adequate one, but we kinda got hung up on, on a, on a few, on a few issues. Now, the thing about 9 Avon Place is, it's, it's a dead end off a commercial street, so it's, it's a street that would, if there wasn't a, a building there, it would run, run into High Street, but there's, there's Aaron's Rentals, so it's, it's a dead end back, back there, and surrounded either by streets or by businesses. So, the applicant is interested in starting a auto sales and auto repair business, and he wants to rent from a current business called Mr. Gutters, which, we didn't mention that name 20 times last night, we didn't mention it once, so that is now the most famous business in, in Hoyoak next to Salzarenga. So, so we, we discussed this matter, and, you know, several counselors had some really great questions, but it kinda boiled down to the parking. And so, to Mr. Bale's credit, and, and his diligence, he came back last night with a, a stamped survey that really delineated, I mean, it's a professionally-done survey that delineated the parking spaces, and I wish Gordon was here. I, I think it was 51 that were delineated, it may have been 53, but it was, it was in the 50s. So, meaning that we wanted to make sure that, that Mr. Bale complied with, with A, A, his application, which he, he wanted 17 spots for, to sell cars. He's got three employees, and he's two spaces for them, and then two spaces for the public, so 21. That's why we put it on there as, as a condition. Now, there was some talk in the committee last night that there may not be enough spaces for the other business, and my way of thinking was, the other business, Mr. Gutters, probably has enough. Now, Mr. Gutters, now apparently has written a second letter, but they wrote a first letter, whatever the date is, July 23rd, I think, saying that they were good to go with, with Mr. Albeiro. Now, they wrote a second letter tonight, saying something similar, but except they say, "I have, this is Dear Hoyoak City Council, I have told Mr. Bale we would lease 17 spaces to display his vehicles on our lot." Now, I don't think that affects the committee vote, but I just wanna call that letter to your attention. So, the, the committee vote was to say that there has to be a minimum of 21 spaces for Mr. Bale, 17 for his cars to be sold, two for employees, and two for customers, for a total of 21. Again, the lot he showed, professionally-done, not hand-drawn, this is done on a CAD/CAM, it was, it really laid out clearly that there's ample parking. That, that, that being said, I'm just trying to see if there's any, anything else of, anything else of note that we, I mean, they're, they're pretty much, he pretty much addressed the other issues, whether there was, that was laid out, and again, it's a July 23rd letter from the planning board, he pretty much hit the, hit the other highlights. And I'll be happy, now, this was not a unanimous vote last night, but it was still a recommendation by the majority of the, of the committee, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counsel Valentine?
Thank you. One of the things that I, that I wanted to point out is that, with the wording that we came up last night, when I saw this letter about the 17 that Counselor Bartley was pointing out, the, the wording is, is actually, if we were to go just by the wording, it says a maximum of 21. So, it, it's, I mean, we could look at the 17, but better than that, I think, is the fact that the folks that wrote the letter are here, and so, if it would be the will of the body, and perhaps we want to suspend the rules and allow them to clarify, so that we make sure that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is, then we can take advantage of the opportunity that they're here for clarification.
What would we be wanting them to clarify?
Well, the fact that the letter says, "I have told him we would lease 17 spaces to display, to display his vehicle on our lot", and then we would wanna hear from them, if, since we're talking about 17, would there be the capacity for the maximum of 21, to include two spots for customers and two for staff, so that Mr. Albeiro can have the special permit as we delineated it?
I don't have that letter in the...
I, I have brought it up with a picture and all. I, I brought it up.
Do you have that?
Yeah, I had the picture.
Oh, okay. This is this?
Yeah, I had left it there.
All right, attaching this. Let me just read this letter real quick, it's dated today. Dear friends, number 9 Avon Place is owned by 740 High Street LLC. Angel Abuelo of 7 Brazzy Road, South Dennis, Massachusetts, 02660, would like to rent the lot at 9 Avon Place, Hoyoak, for the sale of used vehicles. I have told him we would lease 17 spaces to display his vehicles on our lot. If you should have any questions, don't hesitate to call us. Counsel LeBrow Martinez?
He's, Mr. Gary Rabidham, how do you say, yeah, is he, is actually here? If we have any questions, as, as Ms. Valentine mentioned, that he can come up to answer any?
Are we looking to put a condition that says 17 spaces?
It, I've...
It says right now, a maximum of 21.
Maximum, but doesn't necessarily mean that we need him completely, but I, I just wanna hear that he has it, that he's all set. Let me just say that, that this is somewhat, you know, this is not even my word, this is actually Mr. Soto's, and I may, I should be, you know, he should be the one speaking on behalf of this individual business, but somewhat frustrating to see that, you know, last night, the process, and I respect everyone with their decision in this process, this gentleman has come here several times from far away to try, you know, working with the planning department, coming in front of us twice now, from far, to try to do this business here, and I feel like there's a lot of, you know, hoops, and I understand that it is part of the process, but at the same time, you know, I feel kinda, my, myself personally, I'm not including no one else of the, of the body, bothered by this. Last night, we had Sprint in front of us, which was also been coming in front of us, and here's a business, a corporate with a lot of money, and immediately, you know, we probably would have gave them the, the rights to open, and I'm, or, or built here. So, I'm just saying that, you know, we continue to say we're business-friendly, and I think we are, but there's some hoops that we kinda have to help with this process for some individuals who really do not know the bureaucracy of a system like such, and I just, you know, speaking my own mind, and I just wanna share that, and I'm hoping that we definitely get this vote today, so he can get his business going. Thank you.
Counsel Lisi?
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that I understand the information that was passed in this evening. There's a professionally-designed plot plan of some sort, and on it, there's designated 17 spaces for sale, and then in the center, near the existing concrete structure, there seem to be two spaces for auto sales customer, and two spaces for auto sales employees. That brings us to 21, and the way that I understand the letter that was submitted from the property owners, it says we would, we would lease him 17 spaces to display the vehicles on our lot, so that's about the sales. And that's, that's what it, that's, that seems to meet the recommendations, or, I'm sorry, the review of the plant, the planning board, planning department. Is that, is that a correct reading of the information that was passed in?
My, my interpretation of the letter says that they're going to lease him 17 spaces for the display of his vehicles on our lot. The others, if we have the condition of 21, then I guess the other four could be used for, not for the sale of vehicles, but could be used for these other administrative spaces, you know, for people just to come and visit, and check out cars, and things of that nature.
And it does seem to be delineated on the map, so I'm, I'm just, if there's something else that I'm missing in the information that was passed in, I'd like to just be made aware of that.
Counsel McGivern?
The issue is not the petitioner. Petitioner did the best to put something in front of us that would allow him to open up a new business in Hoyoak, which I think all of us promote, and all of us want to see. From the very beginning, the planning board noted back in July, with a communication to us, that this parcel, because Mr., the business known as Mr. Gutter exists, is, has two businesses on one parcel. The special permit addresses the, the petitioner's proposal for the new business for auto sales, which, as we all know, is required. scaled plot plan, must delineate both businesses to make it perfectly clear. We received, although we were told that they were filed with the city two weeks ago, this plan last night for the first time. And it wasn't clear on some of the questions that we had. Unfortunately, the owner of the property was not available last night, and I had hoped to keep the public hearing closed so we could get further testimony from him. I don't question that there's enough room to put the number of spaces for both businesses, but there are several questions that need to be answered. One question is, the ordinance requires landscaping. There is no landscaping in the back of this building. Second question is, Mr. Gutter is a wonderful business. Most of their business is done on High Street, and I think in terms of customer traffic, and I'm reading this into what I was told last night, not something I've heard from the owner himself. And if, I've taken a visit to the site, and it's a working yard right now, with several trucks owned by Mr. Gutter, which I'm guessing are the trucks that go to locations to perform the business, the service that they provide, and several storage vehicles in the lot back there along with the dumpster. It looks like a work yard, you know, it doesn't bother anybody because of the location, but it is a work yard. But it doesn't look like a car, used car sale lot that we want within the city of Hoiok, and that's why, under Counsel Lopez, former Counsel Lopez's guidance, we created this ordinance. So, the questions were asked last night, the planning board told us the plans are incomplete. Mr. Marrero was here last night, and I asked why were the plans incomplete? And basically, because it doesn't give us the full story of what needs to be done in this lot. The issue of this evening is, we closed the public hearing. And I would just caution the board before we take any new testimony that we make sure we do it correctly, but through the law department's guidance.
We may want to have, suspend the rules to have the law department approach us regarding...
So moved.
Yeah. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the law department to address the city council regarding taking additional testimony in the form of this new correspondence and plot plan that was received this evening as opposed to last night's hearing. All in favor of allowing the law department to address us?
It was submitted last night.
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Okay. It's dated, the letter's dated September fifteenth. But Kara, could you just come up to the microphone and was this letter submitted yesterday? Mr. Chairman.
The, my, I wasn't shaking my head at the letter. The letter is new information, I'm agreeing with that. But you also indicated the...
The map was given last night?
This was given last night.
Okay.
Yes, so that was, that was accepted during the public hearing. So, and it was prior to us closing it.
All right, very good. So, Kara, the question is, we have a new letter today, and we have this map from yesterday. This seems to be fine because it was given at the committee last night, but is it appropriate for the council to take in this additional letter following last night's closing of the public hearing?
I mean, the general rule is no. Once the public hearing is closed, you can't take in any new information.
I suppose we can take note of it, but, I mean, it's a fact, but, yeah, all right. Yes, questions for the law department, Counsel Valentin.
So, Kara, if we were to suspend the rules to allow, to hear from the owner of Mr. Gutter, that wouldn't be appropriate either? I mean, it's something that would, I think, give us some information to make a, for everyone to make an educated vote.
But Kara, you're not basing your decision based on council rules that could be suspended or unsuspended, you're basing yours on the law, right?
Right, and it's governed by the state law. You know, the statute allows, the council is the special permit granting authority. So, the public hearing could be held before the full council, but you're allowed to delegate that to a committee. But I think the same, the same general rules would apply that once the public hearing is closed, you can't take any new testimony that then influences the decision.
So, it's not really an opportunity to like suspend the rules because there's not a rule to suspend, it's a law, that's the problem.
I guess I'm just going by, you know, when we're looking at items that are in front of us, and they're, you know, and there's someone in the public that wants to provide additional information.
I know.
It's, I mean, we suspend the rules and they come to the microphone and say whatever they're going to say.
Right. You make a good point, the problem is, is we have the law which says when the committee makes a decision to close the public hearing, that's what that vote means, the windows shut on that type of thing. Counsel Lebron Martinez, any questions for the law department?
So, let me ask you an ignorant question. Next time we have an incident like that, it's best to leave it open, leave the hearing open, coming back, and then we can...
Well, you better, yeah, I mean, you better feel very comfortable that you have received now all the information you need to make your decision before you vote to close the public hearing, because otherwise, that's it. You've made a decision that you have all the information you have, and now it's time to vote. Counsel McGivern.
I guess one question to the solicitor and perhaps come up with a solution. Kara, we talked one thing about the special permit versus the existing business known as Mr. Gutter. And we both tried to get ahold of our billing department, inspect, our billing department director this afternoon to talk about the enforcement of that. Could the special permit itself have an impact on the existing business once the special permit is issued? Could it, if the existing business is not abiding by the ordinance in terms of what they need for parking and what they need for storage?
Well, the ordinance does require that where there is another use on the property, the applicant is supposed to show the number of spaces that are for that use, and you look at it cumulatively so that if there's, you know, just by way of example, a hundred spaces and one business needs seventy-five, the only, the other business can only get twenty-five. And we added that specifically to address this type of situation. So, I do understand that, I guess, that information wasn't really provided. And when I spoke with Counsel McGivern this afternoon, you raised the issue of how that would be enforced. And, you know, that is something the building commissioner would enforce. And it was late this afternoon when I tried to reach him, so he wasn't available. But, you know, it might be something that the property owner would be the one that would be given a violation letter and then have to address it between the two businesses. But cumulatively, the property can only support a certain number of cars. So, I couldn't say definitively how that would be ultimately enforced, but it could be an issue down the road. And that's why it is a requirement of the ordinance to provide that.
One suggestion you did make this afternoon, I think is a good suggestion, is to actually post each of the parking spots for the used car lot. You know, Mr. Gutter can do, Mr. Gutter needs to do. But to make sure that we, when there's an enforcing agent of the city, you know, going into the lot, that they will know which spots are for the car lot, which spots can be for whatever the use the existing business needs.
Right, and I think that would be a reasonable condition that the spaces have to be clearly marked for each business.
Okay. I think it's clear on this map that there's been some improvements, but it's clear that there's plenty of parking spots. The enforcement, I think, is the key. As far as the landscaping goes, is that something that can be up to the discretion of the enforcing agent?
Well, the land, I don't know what the exact provision says, but if it's a requirement under the ordinance, you know, it's up to the council to make sure that condition is met. And then, certainly, if it's not met, it would be up to the building commissioner or zoning official to enforce.
Thank you. Mr. President, I, when the cease listener's done, I'd like to make a couple amendments that may allow us to proceed with the vote this evening.
Counsel Brezner.
Thank you. Kara, is it true that this applicant still has to go in front of the license board for a permit to actually run the business of selling cars?
They would.
Okay. Is it also true that the ordinance talk about, like, either the license board can enforce the rules of selling and buying cars as well as the police chief or designee by the police chief?
They can, but the license board wouldn't have any authority to enforce the zoning.
Right, but I mean, if there was, if there was a problem with the parking lot, or if there was a problem with, you know, too many cars, they had thirty-five cars instead of twenty-one cars, or it was a junkyard per se, wouldn't it be fair to say that the licensing authority could call them in and say, because they were cited by the police chief or a designee of the police department, brought in and say, "Hey, you got a month to clean up the lot, fix it, or we're going to yank your license?"
They could, and the use issues are zoning, so that would be, and any conditions of the special permit would be zoning, so those would be through the city council. I would say, I mean, you're right, but the license board is far more limited in their jurisdiction.
So, thank you, Kara. So, and my simple thoughts are that the committee did their job, their map was provided. What's there now, what's going to be there is much better than what's going to be there. Let's approve it, let's let the license board handle it, let's follow up. If anybody wants to drive by it, it looks like a junkyard, call the police chief, have them go over there, do a little report, cite the owner, have the license board pull them in, and let's get this done, let's get this business off the ground. Thank you.
Counsel Lebron Martinez.
Yeah, understanding that we cannot use any evidence to support this, but there's, he bought even pictures to demonstrate as much as work that he's done to keep it up, doing the lines as we required. I went by it again today, confirming it, that the lot does confirm to what we're looking at. So, I'm hoping we just vote on this tonight, thank you.
All right, so we have no further questions for the law department, so we're back under general discussion, recognizing Counsel McGivern.
Just, if I could offer an amendment that we designate, that the owner of the property makes sure that his tenant, the owner of the proposed used car lot, designate each of the parking spots for the used car lot, those for cars for sale, those for employees, and those for customers.
Okay, there's a second on that, under discussion, Counsel Soto.
Two, just for house cleaning, just for the record, I was never made aware about this. So, thanks to Counsel Martinez for pointing it out, thank you.
A second, if there's no...
I have a comment on that. I would just, I would just like to point out, do we know of any other car establishments that have this requirement within the city of Hoiok that says, that says that this is for customer, this is for, I'm selling a car, this is for, I'm selling a car that's labeled on the property? I mean, this is, is this cost prohibitive? I mean...
If I could, through the chair, I'd be happy to answer that.
I'm sorry, through the chair, I apologize, I wasn't talking to you, Joe was talking about you.
Counsel President, I appreciate that question. There aren't, maybe only one or two other similar situations that I can think of where there's multiple uses on the same lot. One would be the gas station on Lincoln Street where we've argued for years on how to, how to work with that owner. Another would be on Main Street closer towards three ninety-one, there's like three or four businesses right there. They're actually separate lots, but they're all, it's the same problem, you know, distinguishing the, whether it's the building commissioner or the license board, which doesn't do enforcement, or as you said, someone designated from the police department. They have a very difficult time. The ordinance committee recently amended the ordinance to include that, or I think it was your, I'm sorry, but I think it was a request to put the number of spots on the license, so when someone shows up at the lot, lot on behalf of the city, they know what they're looking at. I'm not asking a lot of money to be spent on this. It's actually the suggestion of the city's solicitor to avoid the problem of, once we issued a special permit, we may be, you know, even though he's the owner of a lot, we may be pushing Mr. Gutter out of the way he does business currently. I just want to make sure, that was, those were the questions that we had hoped to ask last night. I had asked to keep the public hearing open, I realized the petitioners were down here twice since July. I felt bad for them. I agree with Counsel Lebron Martinez, it's frustrating, the bureaucracy is frustrating. I, to this day, since last night, since we started this process in DGR, since the ordinance committee's been doing this, I don't know who is supposed to help the people that come to the city, because very little help is being given to them. You know, the planning department makes their determination, passes it on to us, and leaves it up to us. I've said this many times, these are regulatory issues. We are a legislative body that deals with land use. You made the most common sense, you know, comment this evening where you said, "Let's leave the regulatory part up to the people who are in charge of it." That's what it should be. Unfortunately, to grant the special permit, we have to abide by the ordinance in the way it was written. And I'm trying to make the amendments that get us through that to allow us to vote on the special permit this evening. My second amendment would be that the owner of the property appropriately...
Want these as a package, or are we going to do these one by one?
I wanted to get it out on the floor, it's only one more. That the owner of the property appropriately add, where possible, landscaping according to the ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to have the landscaping added pursuant to the ordinance. Any discussion on that amendment? Counsel Lisi.
I just want to make it clear that we're making these conditions of the special permit now, right?
Correct, that's what these amendments are, exactly.
Due to the ordinance, the way the ordinance was written.
Counsel Bartley.
Okay, I just want to make this quick comment, I know it's been going on for a while, so I'll be brief as I can. These issues were all discussed last night when the public hearing was open. The reason we closed the public hearing is so we can move the thing out of committee and get it up here to a vote, okay? So, if, now, this letter, I'm sorry it was even written, because all it did was to, it was, you know, the law of unintended consequences. I'm sure it is written with good intentions, I support, which is fine. The property owner already wrote a letter, Mr. President, that we, that the committee received, dated July twenty-third. We accepted it in a public hearing, said, "This is dear Mr. Burkott, this is to confirm our support of the application by Aunt Alba Elton," okay? You can't get any more clear than that. Now, he wrote this other letter saying about the seventeen spaces, and it just got confusing because the special permit's twenty-one spaces. No big deal, but now, now we can't accept this, there you go, that goes in the recycle bin, and which is fine. So, the public process worked, I just want to make another comment. The economic development director, okay, he may have said the application is incomplete, but let me suggest something, Mr. President. It was ninety-nine and a half percent complete. Now, the issue he had was the parking. And then, when the applicant, who did a fine job, came up with this beautiful plan, checkmate, complete. Now, he may have said it was technically, might be completely, but, so the body knows, ninety-nine point five percent is complete, okay? So, it wasn't a hundred percent, like we all get on our tests, but it was pretty darn close. So, I just want to, and that was on the public record during the public hearing. So, Mr. President, in my opinion, this is a new kind of thing for this committee, I'm a little new to it, the committee's a little new to it. But I don't want to make it sound like this is goulash here. We did, we used the rules, they were pretty darn clear. I think we're going to get a good result out of this. Yeah, it's not as fast as we want it. The applicant knew he had to come back here, he was good to go with it. He wasn't, he wasn't upset, and he provided a darn good plan that really sealed the deal. So, he's, again, to be commended, I want to thank him, as I did last night. He did a great job on that. So, I hope that helps, thank you.
Very good. Any other thoughts anyone else would like to share? Counsel Brezner.
Just a quick point to Counsel McGivern's landscaping. Is there someone that's going to come up with a landscaping plan? Or is he just, are we going to put grass around the whole yard, trees? I don't, landscaping's kind of a vague comment, and I don't know who's going to, what the thought is, make a, put in landscaping, well, what are the parameters on that?
Mr. President?
Counsel Valentin.
If I could, through you.
Sure.
Obviously, Mr. Marrero is not here tonight, and he was part of the conversation, but, so I'm not going to quote him, because I don't have a transcript of what exactly was said. But I was here for the conversation, and what I remember, and I'm pretty good with my memory, is that when the conversation about landscaping came up, what we were told was that because this is end of a street area, there's no real abutters, I mean, there's, you know, that basically the landscaping piece was not a deal breaker. So, that is what I remember from the discussion last night. If I'm completely incorrect about that, I will defer to my colleagues on the committee, but I, that's what I remember from last night. And thinking that, just like Counsel Bartley said, that I think we can move on this tonight, and that's what I'm suggesting we do.
Thank you.
Counsel Alexander.
Thanks. First of all, I'm sorry for walking in late, but not only was I at this hearing, but I've sat on ordinance for three years where we handled these kind of permits before, so maybe that's a little bit of a different perspective. As far as landscaping goes, the property's actually surrounded on four sides by streets. So, there is no abutter except for a little tiny sliver of parking lot and one of the buildings being subdivided, so technically, there's no abutter there. But there's no, there's no daylight between the two properties, it's building to building, it's one building. So, there's functionally no place to put any landscaping, as well as no neighbor to any side of this lot that would, that would have any reaction to landscaping. As far as what the license board's role would be, typically, they're going to issue a license, which is going to confirm the number of cars allowed by the special permit, which gives them then regulatory authority to ensure that if there are more cars than that, so they're going to look, they're going to say, "Okay, the permit was for twenty-one, we're going to give you a license for twenty-one. If you go over twenty-one, we now have regular authority to step in and do something about that." So, there is a way to come back, to Counsel President's point, there is a way to come back around and enforce that later. I think, you know, this is one of the most complete applications I've seen for a used car operation in the city in the three and a half years that I've been looking at these things. I see absolutely no reason not to move positively on this tonight, thank you.
Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, just briefly, I sort of wish I...
Yeah, just briefly, I sort of wish I had, I was in the meeting. We had a finance meeting last night. I was going to come out here and didn't, but I go with Counsel Bartley, did a thorough job. I heard the committee in several hours that everybody worked on, and it's just, this is thorough. I see it as thorough. I don't see any reason of letting this go any further than let's vote on it tonight and get this business going.
On the motion.
So, starting with our first motion, which is going to be, there was an amendment on the floor to add landscaping as required by the ordinance as a condition.
As appropriate, Mr. President.
As appropriate.
Within reason, and I think the points have been made. It would be very difficult to add a lot of landscaping to the type of lot it is, but unfortunately, the way the ordinance was written, it's required.
Okay. So that motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Show of hands. Raise your hand if you're in favor of the amendment. Five, motion fails. So amendment number two was proposed and seconded, which was that we specifically delineate that the, let me back up one minute, the applicant shall specifically delineate the spaces in the parking lot that will be used for the sale of cars, that they will actually be using those 17 spaces, particularly as articulated on the map. That is on the floor now to add that as a condition. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Show of hands. Raise your hand if you're in favor of the amendment. Six, motion fails. Okay. So both of these two conditions have been defeated. We currently have as the only condition that there be a maximum of 21 parking spaces be provided, and we're still comfortable with that language.
Not a maximum, but a minimum.
Correct. This is that a condition that a maximum of 21 parking spaces be provided. That is currently the only condition at this time, okay? Any further discussion? Okay. Then the motion on the floor is to adopt the committee report. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report and granting the special permit with that one condition. A no vote is to deny the same.
Mr. President?
Yes, Counsel.
I'm sorry, I'm just rethinking what you just said. If it says a maximum, then the applicant could legally provide fewer than that.
Correct.
That is not the intent of the committee report.
It's a minimum.
It's a minimum, not a maximum. So if that's just a clerical error, it needs to be corrected.
It says that under the condition, this is the way it's written on the committee jacket, that under the condition that a maximum of 21 parking spaces be provided.
Correct. That should be a minimum, Counsel Bartley?
It should be a minimum of 21 spaces.
Minimum 21 spaces. But what about this notion that you said earlier that the license board will license whatever number of spaces or cars that we allocate?
They may stick a maximum on it, but from the perspective of the ordinance, we need to put a minimum on it. The license board can say, you meet the minimum of 21, we're going to grant you a license for 25, or they may say, we'll grant you a license for 21.
So if they want to sell 55 cars, that'll be permitted?
It'll be permitted by the license board if they choose to do that, although they'll normally go with the recommendation of the committee.
Was that the intent of the committee?
But the committee has to put a minimum by law.
Okay, then we're going to need an amendment to change the word maximum.
Mr. President, that's not the intent of the ordinance at all. It's a maximum that has, we have to determine how many total cars can be sold. If they want to put less on the lot, that's fine, but we have to put the maximum on the permit.
I agree.
It's not a maximum number of cars, though. It's a maximum number of spaces, correct?
Says that under the condition that there be a maximum of 21 parking spaces, so that would therefore limit the number of auto sales cars at any one time to 21 cars.
So, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So the intent of the committee was a maximum of 17 cars for sale. The 21 number came up because the ordinance requires two spaces for up to three employees, so that brought us to 19, and two spaces for customer parking. That brought us to the 21 number. So however you want to word it, that gets us to 21 total. So 17 cars for sale, that's what the gentleman applied for, for special permit. That's what we granted.
Right.
The other four are per ordinance.
I think the committee wording has got it right, as written.
It's not. What it needs to be stricken is the word maximum. I'm sorry, but it's just not right. What it should say is, the committee report is recommending that a permit be provided to provide 21 spaces, not a maximum, not a minimum, 21 spaces.
However, though, the point is that with the word maximum, the person could sell 10 cars, they could sell 12 cars, they could sell up to a maximum of 17 cars, because they need those other four spaces to meet the other ordinance requirements.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So then space for 17 cars.
So if you say a minimum of 21, that means they could have theoretically the entire backlot, which has some 50-something spaces on it. And the committee's intention, as I understand it here quite clear, is not that they'd be allowed to sell 30, 40, 50 cars.
The committee's intention and the ordinance intention is that there are 17 spaces for cars for sale, two spaces for employees, two spaces for, what was the other?
Yeah, which just gets us to the maximum of 21.
Not a maximum, not a minimum. Those are the numbers.
But they're not, we don't want to put a condition that they have to have 21, because they may want to sell fewer cars than 21.
That doesn't mean they need fewer spaces for the business based on the square footage of the business.
Okay, then you can offer that as an amendment, and if there's a second, we'll move forward. Are you offering an amendment?
I am offering an amendment.
Okay, is there a second? Motion fails for lack of a second. We're back to the main item, which is with the one condition that there be a condition of a maximum of 21 parking spaces. That is the vote that is currently on the floor. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report and approving this permit with that one condition. A no vote is to deny it. Clerk will call the roll.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Presnahan?
Yes.
Shatna?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Soto?
Absolutely.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your unanimous vote, you've granted the special permit for that gentleman, and we wish him the best of luck. All right.
Thank you.
All right, all the best. Good luck.
That's what I...
We got both languages going. I love it. I love it. All right, so this brings us to communication number two. Communication number two is from Brenna Murphy McGee, our city clerk, and Ryan Allen, the administrative assistant to the city council. It's the minutes of the regular meeting of September 1st and a special meeting of September 8th, 2015.
Make a motion, receive.
And approve.
And approve.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and approve the minutes articulated in item number two on the agenda. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number three.
Make a motion, receive.
Yep. Motion's been made and seconded to receive. This is a communication from Bellamy Schmidt. The acting city auditor, it's a letter regarding the Board of Assessors. In it, the sum of it is that the, he's looking for us to take some action to either fill the third seat, to fill the third seat. And we've had some discussion in the past on getting there. I did ask the assessors tonight to come and give the counselors a brief update as to where we're at in terms of getting the job posted, and they've been working hard on doing that, so if we could suspend the rules to allow the city assessors to address us. Okay, all in favor, suspend the rules to allow the assessors to address the city council?
Very briefly.
Opposed, so moved. Tony, Debbie, welcome. Could you just give us a brief update on this issue, please?
Yeah, we had talked about the position and...
Tony, turn up, make sure, is the mic on, bud?
Is it on?
Just make sure.
Speak up.
Just speak into it or pull it up to you.
Pull it up. Well, yeah.
Pretend you're effing. Come on.
Yeah.
As we know, the position hasn't been filled since Mayor Sullivan days, so, just for funding. So the state has required us to comply with 1, 3, 5, 7, an odd number of board members. So we've discussed with Robert Judge and myself and Debbie, and we're at the point where Robert's probably going to do the job posting tomorrow for that position. It's a small stipend. It's like $500 for that position. We're looking for someone by ordinance which still has city, lives in the city, and has requis...
The requirements for the, to be an assessor.
For the job, so, as an assessor. So there has been a couple people that have been interested, but that still is your appointment. So when we collect all those resumes or applications, we'll turn them over to you, and then you guys can make your decision on that.
Okay. So hopefully we'll have some candidates here pretty soon to fill that. Any questions? Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, Tony, thanks for coming down and explaining that to us. I know it's something that we've been working on, trying to move on really quick. It's an important issue that we have to do. If this person, would it be maybe one meeting a year or two meetings?
Depending. There might be, you know, more than the one meeting that we do, you know.
So one or two, probably at the most.
The one good thing about us is that we're two, so most of the work that we, two-thirds that we do every day, motor vehicle, everything, you know, is governed by us on the signature. So everything would be fine on that. So it's not a lot of work for the new member. It's just to comply with the state.
With the state, okay.
Yeah.
With the tie, right. Thank you.
If one of us were to neglect themselves from voting on a property or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. I know that having a third person is very important, because we also have the option of going to one, but I don't think that's a good idea. So I think going to three is a fantastic idea, just for the fact that if one of, either of you guys have a conflict of interest, now you can have a third person. But having said that, too, is how many abatements do you get a year? Or, I'm sorry, how many applications for an abatement?
Yeah.
And from my understanding, you guys have voted pretty much 100% against all of them, right?
No, no, not against all of them.
Okay, how many have you voted, how many people that have applied for reduction has been?
20%.
It's about two thirds that get denied and a third get approved.
Well, I'm hoping this person comes in level-headed and makes the right decisions a lot of times. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel McGivern?
To make the right decision, the person has to be knowledgeable. Does the person also have to be certified?
Yeah, we would be looking for someone who is certified by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, is there any training or certification class to the city?
Well, it depends on who you would...
Some of the classes are free, but others there may be in a class. Like the Prop 2 and 1/2 class, I think is free, right?
Prop 2 and 1/2 is free. The qualification workshop is free through the state. They have to take course 101, which is offered by the DOR. They have to take course 200, which is offered by the MAAO, and it's offered once a year in August.
Where do they offer it?
At UMass.
UMass.
But, I mean, if someone were to come in with the qualifications already, then that would be, you know, most likely one of the candidates you would consider, because then there's no cost to the city for education also.
Has there been any problems with just the two vote, the two assessors on the board since both your tenors?
No, no.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, thanks a lot, guys. Really appreciate you coming down and giving us that update, and thank you for your hard work on helping us to resolve that. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, great.
Mr. President, if we don't have an order, I think, just procedural, we'd have to put an order in committee and take a formal vote that we want to go forward with the advertising.
I think we already actually have done that, and it was already referred to personnel.
I wasn't sure. I just made sure.
And then it was just a matter of putting together the job description, because they have all the technical knowledge of all these different classes and things.
And I talked to Robert Judge, and I said, hold off until tomorrow morning, until I came to before the council tonight, so.
And I did speak to the mayor today, and he was on board with it being posted, so...
When's the due date?
It'll be January 1st.
Oh, it will be?
Or before we set the, you know, before we set the, hopefully.
Try and get the, let's go with about, what, four weeks, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's say within four weeks. Let's see what we get for applicant.
About the same time we take to get the auditors position filled. City solicitors, too.
That's not ours, thankfully.
It's not us.
All right.
Mr. President, one comment, though. I'm trying not to say this, but it takes the wisdom of the state to step in and tell us to fix something that's not broken.
We're actually going to see that later when it comes to one of our financial transfers, right, Counsel Leahy? About 120 grand of dollars we have to spend for no reason. Debbie, Tony, thank you so much for coming. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, great. Okay, so we could refer this to committee. We could just receive it. What's the pleasure of the body on item number three?
Well, we don't need to send it to committee, because you said that, we've already done the...
Yeah, we've already got it. They're ready to post it.
Yeah, so just receive.
Just receive.
Second.
And we'll get the candidates back as quickly as humanly possible, and we can take a vote.
Sounds good.
All in favor of receiving?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number four.
Mr. President, take items four and five as a package.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to take up items four and five as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Also moved. Item number four. Item number four is a petition from the citizens of the City of Hoyoc opposing any stormwater fee. Item number five is a petition of citizens of the City of Hoyoc opposing any stormwater runoff fee.
Accept, receive, and refer to finance to set up a public hearing.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive. Refer to the Finance Committee for the purposes of setting up a meeting, which is required under Section 8 of our charter. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, under discussion. Counsel Bacon?
Thank you. These petitions came in as two separate petitions, because the folks collecting them had minor language changes between one and another, so they had to come in and get separately certified, the intention really being of well over 100 people to call for a public hearing on this matter, because the budget was based on the establishment of a fee. So while there is no order in front of us to officially establish the fee, the citizens are concerned, because they understand that the budget is based on the establishment of a fee, so they wish to be heard on the matter. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Leahy?
I was just going to actually echo what Counsel Bacon had said, that the budget is based on the fee, not only for the residents, but also business owners as well. You know, and a lot of the constituents that I've been talking to, you know, this is another tax without representation. So I'm looking forward to this Finance meeting. Thank you.
Well, it would be helpful, and again, I'll mention it to the mayor, that we'll need a proposal.
Yeah.
Right? What is the plan? Is, you know, we've heard much about $50 for this group of individuals, $500 if you're such and such a size business. Whatever Plan X is, we will need a copy of Plan X, whatever that is that they're proposing. Of course, we can modify it down the road if we see fit, or ultimately approve nothing, if that be the will of the body. Okay, so any other discussion? Hearing none. Moving items four and five over to Finance for a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number six. Item number six comes to us from the residents of Reservation Road, where they have a petition requesting that speed bumps be installed on the street.
Make a motion, receive, and send to the DPW.
Now send the ordinance copy to DPW and city engineer, which is the same office, I think, right now, but nevertheless.
Okay, motion on the floor is to receive. Refer a copy to the ordinance committee with a copy to the engineer and the DPW, which is at the moment one and the same person until we find a new city engineer. Under discussion, Counsel Soto.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the record, too, I had filed an order requesting a speed pump up there. Speed bump placed up there, so.
Your influence precede you then, obviously, by this petition. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Make a motion and take item number seven through item number 11 as a package and just receive them. We all have copies.
All right, mo, Paul, take care. Motion on the floor is to receive items seven through 11. Suspend the rules, take them all up as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Also moved. Item number seven is the license board commission minutes of August 26th. Item number eight is the Hoyoc redevelopment authority minutes of June 10th and July 1st. Item number nine is the Board of Public Works minutes of July 9th. Item number 10 is the Sewer Commission minutes of July 6th. Item number 11 is the Stormwater Authority minutes of July 6th. Is there a motion to receive?
Some of them.
Some of them, second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Mr. President, make a motion and take number 12 and make a motion to approve for renewal.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive item number 12 and to grant the renewal. This is a petition for a special permit for renewal of a home occupation permit for Ed Galica. He lives at 19 Concord Avenue, and this is for a home remodeling business. And let me just double check here. Ed has had this permit for a long, long time.
Long time.
And Ed is completely current on all of his taxes and municipal charges.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, this is a use by right under the home occupation use thing. It's not a special permit. This comes up periodically. I'm just bringing it up again. Doesn't change anything.
I think the fee.
The fee is the fee, whatever it is.
Right.
Okay.
Nevertheless, motion on the floor is to grant the petition. Any other discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting item number 12 and granting Mr. Galicka his renewal and no vote is to deny it.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan? Shatna?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you have granted the renewal for Mr. Galicka. Next item up on the agenda is the President's Report. Just very briefly, couple things. One is I had the pleasure of going to Sullivan School today to, we had the, and Counsel Soto was also there to receive the governor for the granting of a great grant that's coming the city's way for the schools and for a partnership with early education. And it was fantastic. They're really working in partnership with the Valley Opportunity Council and the Hoyoke Chicabe Head Start to really provide a great amount of additional resources here in the city. Hoyoke was selected among five communities for these additional resources. I thought it was a fantastic presentation on behalf of the state. We're glad that Hoyoke was awarded this. I also did have an opportunity today to speak to Mr. Reich, who is, as you know, the new receiver for the city of Hoyoke for our schools. And him and I did agree that we would get together pretty soon to go over a number of items of mutual concern between the City Council and his office. And so if any of you have any particular items you would like me to go over or related to the schools, by all means, just touch bases with me offline and I'll be sure to make those point because I think we're, him and I will be getting together over the next couple of weeks. So that's a great thing. The other thing I wanted to mention is also the due diligence and hard work of Counsel Bartley. Once again, we'll be having Hoyoke Day at the Big E coming up on the 22nd of September. If anyone has an opportunity, do you want to just go, is there a bit of a program that we're gonna have again? Counsel Bartley, are you privy to the, those details or?
No, just, I'll be, I'll be manning the gate, Gate 1, I think it is. I'll be there 4 o'clock.
Okay.
If I recognize ya, come on in.
Absolutely. Great. So we have that. I also wanted to point out in the obituary section, as we already have been mentioned, I was gonna do, ask for a moment of silence for Counsel Higgins, but obviously we already did that. I would, you know, certainly encourage folks to take an opportunity to attend either the WAKE or the services. That'll be coming up for our former colleague. We're gonna miss him very, very much. He was a great guy. Of course, as we know, his favorite saying, Counsel Leahy, every day is a bonus.
Bonus ran out.
Unfortunately for us. So we're gonna miss Pat, who sat in this chair for many, many years, right where Counsel Anthony Soto sits. That was Pat Higgins' desk for 16 years. He was a very lovable, warm person. So that's all I have for the President's Report. Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, if I could just quickly ask, I'm not sure, maybe it's in my mail at home, but did we get invited to the Lyman Terrace press conference? Or did we get invited to the Sullivan School? I found out about this today through the grapevine that the good governor was in town. That's something that I would love to have attended.
Sure, sure. Good question. Neither is the answer. I heard about it last minute only because my kids happened to go to Sullivan School and my wife caught wind of it and I heard about it third-hand. So then, of course, I connected over to the governor's office to confirm and talk to Mr. Bryce, the principal. And that's how I was able to get myself over there. The Lyman Terrace event, I had heard that after the Sullivan School event, they were going down there. That was the first I heard of it because I do try to keep folks in the loop if I know about it, yeah. We need to be doing, for people that are in the know around here, I think we need to be doing a better job of informing the City Council when these type of public events.
And to transparent.
So, yeah. So, because I know a lot of you, I know it's in the middle of the workday and I know a lot of you are very busy, working hard. But by the same token, I know if you could break away for an hour to go to some of these events, I know.
Especially when the good governor's in town.
Exactly, exactly. And I know you would love to do that. So I did give him greetings on behalf of the Hoyoke City Council and Charlie was his warm, usual self and that was, that was nice. So he does, you know, him and Karen have both been here in Hoyoke many, many times, so.
Many times.
So that was nice. All right, so that's it for the President's Report. Without further ado, this brings us over to the Finance Committee. We have no Ordinance Committee reports for this particular meeting. And so we're gonna start off with item number 14A. 14A is a report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred a bond for a school boiler replacement at Morgan and Ian White School. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, Bacon and Jordane.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading for redoing the bond.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive item number 14A and to pass its first reading for this bond request. Under discussion.
I voted against it.
Yeah, real quickly, we approved a bond for $750,000 for Ian White as well as Morgan School to put in a new boiler system. And they did come in and present it quite a few months ago. The issue was at the time of the presenting, it was part of their accelerated repair period. So they didn't have a design as to what the cost would ultimately be for the boilers. After they got the bonding and went through this process, all the bids started coming back extremely high. One came in at roughly $2 million. So after redoing the request, ultimately, the lowest bid was what we have before us, which is $944,000. Hence, the request to redo the 750 and bringing up another 194,000. In essence, to cover what they're contracting for, which is redoing the boiler systems at both schools. So normally, they have a design phase. It's just it was part of the accelerated repair process, which is they didn't have it up right. So they're trying to get in in order to make sure that they would, in essence, capture that 80% as well from the reimbursement. So 194,000, I'm sorry, 944,000 for the total bond for both schools, 80% reimbursement from the state.
And this is the Boston estimator. This number could come in last. They tend to be on the high side. So the, this is an authorization that the council is giving. The total appropriation may ultimately be some number less. But this is a, this is a total authorization.
Just on one other point, I understand, because I know you guys mentioned it earlier. Within the meeting last night, we did, we were informed that some of the costs were a little bit egregious in the sense that you have to have an OPM, which is a project manager, which would make sense is you have one person to manage both projects. But under the state rules, they were not going to allow us to do that to save money. They're requiring that we have one for each school, which really kind of doesn't make any sense. And the cost for that is like 30 to 60,000 per person.
60,000 each, so 120 total.
For a two-month project, so kind of steep and over cost or something. But really, that is out of our hands. This is all part of the contract and state law. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Absolutely, we all disagreed with it, but we don't have the choice on that.
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, very quickly, Lenny Givens came in front of us last night, as Counsel McGee had said. He gave a very good presentation. He answered all of our questions. He did go into the OPM, which is the owner's project manager. And that is $30,000 per month for one individual, it's two people, which comes down to about $7,500 a week. When we questioned him and asking him, what exactly does an OPM do? That person makes sure that everything's compliant, making sure that the contractors are there to fix, you know, to bring the boilers in. And it's pretty much just an overshattering type of job, something that our own Department of Public Works, Bill Fuqua, would be absolutely, more than qualified to handle. So the fact that we have to pay, you know, $7,500 a week times two of taxpayers' money. Now granted, we are getting, you know, reimbursed 80% from, it's still taxpayers' money. I'm gonna be voting against this tonight and I encourage all of you to as well because it's just, you know, in times we're trying to cut back, where, you know, we're talking about having fire trucks that aren't working, right? We're talking about laying off teachers in some cases because of money. And now we're gonna give this amount of money for a person just to make sure that the paperwork is done when we can do that ourselves. You know, we have to maybe file an order and have our state delegates come in and explain what they're doing to prevent this. But it just, it's ridiculous and I'm not gonna vote for it.
Any other discussion? Counsel Tomlin?
Yeah, Lenny gave a great presentation and unfortunately, the cost is high and it's something that we have to do because to get that reimbursement from the state, that's the state rules, is to have this. It's unusual sometimes that you have two boilers done at once. Sometimes you get one school, one boiler, three years, you get another school. But these are both gone at the same time and unfortunately, we have to do this. So he laid everything down with us. I think the maximum amount would be 944,000, you know, the total. It increased a bit, but it's not gonna go over that amount and there might be some cost savings down the road a little bit for materials because stated that in Boston, that's where all the estimates come from and usually the western part of the state, that the price is a little bit lower for the equipment, the materials or whatever. So I encourage my colleagues to vote for this because it's something that these schools need. And it's something that unfortunately, the cost has to be there for this special person to supervise the work that has to be done and has to be done properly.
Okay, any other discussion? Counsel Bacon?
I would just note that I did seek assurance that since we're going to bond for all of this, that one of the schools isn't slated for closure in any time in the near future. And while some of the costs within the contract do seem egregious, we really have to make sure the schools are functioning. Thank you.
I don't have a boiler, right? Counsel Bartley, any thoughts?
No, we're good.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved?
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting and approving this bond authorization. A no vote is to deny it.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatna?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
13 yays and one nay.
By your vote, you've approved the bond authorization for an additional 194,000. Mr. Chairman, did you want to consider our, back there, maybe suspend the rules?
We can, let's see.
Item number 14F.
Take out an order, 14F, suspend the rules, take out 14F.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules for the purposes of taking up and going to item number 14F. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number 14F is a report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an appeal of Melvin Cologne to operate a taxi cab here in the city of Hoyoke. Have considered the same, recommend that the license be approved, pending a copy of the driving history and a chief of police update. Voting in favor of that was Counselors McGee, Leahy, Tomlin, Bacon and Jordane. Mr. Chairman?
Make a motion to receive, adopt and grant the license.
Second.
Grant the appeal, yep.
Grant the appeal license.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report and grant the appeal of the police chief's decision to deny Mr. Cologne the taxi cab license. Under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yes, I did get ahold of the chief. He said he didn't have the file on Mr. Cologne with him. So he couldn't specifically pull it up and tell us exactly. However, Mr. Cologne did bring in his record and to show us. And if you look at the record, a lot of the issues happened in, you know, 1999 up to about 2004. There were a couple in 2005, 2006, but those speeding tickets. So the bulk of the issues were from a long time ago. And based on having done these before in the committee, the chief does exactly what we want him to do. If he sees issues, he denies it to allow us to take a further review of it. So the chief did his job. And based on the record, it's stuff that happened a while ago from 2005, 2006 till now, nothing. His record is fine, which then the question becomes, he did have issues in the past. Has his history now shown from like 2005, 2006 up to now, he's in essence doing well? If you look at his other issue is, he was licensed in Springfield as well as Chicabe and I think he said West Springfield to have a taxi cab license out there. They issued those licenses to him. It's Hoyoke. Since he's coming back for a new license, it's not a renewal, it's a new license, we had to look at the record a little more deeply. I leave it up to the other members of the council, but based on the gentleman printing the record, showing us everything, being forward with us, telling us, you know, I have things in the past, you know, do we penalize him for things in the past or go forward and allow him to have a job to make a living? I'm gonna vote to allow him to get the taxi cab license.
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. I think what the chief did was the right thing to do. The chief looks at something and he has to make a decision. That's his, his job, just like the building inspector. They look at something and if it's out of conformance, they have to, they have to say no. They can't approve it. But that's the job of the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's our job. Where if the chief says something, we can look at the information that's presented and we can make an informed decision. As Counsel McGee, he showed us the information tonight. This person had some issues in the past, but since what, 2005, 2009, he hasn't had these issues. And also, he has his license in three other different communities. Now, this gentleman who came in front of us, who was very well spoken and he gave us a good presentation last night. I mean, he could do the easy thing and he wouldn't have to do any of this and he could just sign up to be an Uber driver and he wouldn't have to worry about this. The city of Hoyoke would not know anything about it and he would do his taxi cab driving through Uber. I applaud him for going this route. The city of Hoyoke knows him and we can continue from there. Thank you.
Counsel McGivern?
If I could ask a question through the chair?
Yes, sir.
To the Chairman of Finance. The license is for one cab?
Yes.
In that cab, we have the insurance, registration, all in order?
Yes.
Been inspected by the police department?
It's, he works for Yellow Cab, so he's getting a tax, a license to drop off in the city. Usually, it's a renewal, Joe, and it just goes forward. What happened was from 1999, when we first issued him his license, there was no problems. But then about 2.
09, he.
09, he stopped, getting license from Hoyoke and just primarily worked in Springfield and Chicabe. So he never did drop offs in Hoyoke or pickups, I think is our rule. You can't pick up in Hoyoke unless you have the license. So he never did that. Now he's coming back saying, "Well, I'd like to do pickups in Hoyoke," which then requires the license. So since it's not a renewal, because he took off that timeframe, he's coming in for a new license, which then printed out the rec, his record and that's where the chief made his decision.
But, so you license the cabs.
The cabs are licensed through Yellow.
We have the cab licenses through Yellow and then this is his actual license to be a cabbie in Hoyoke. So that's the, this is what was denied.
His license.
His license.
It was denied by the chief.
Correct.
Okay. And that was after upfront, we approved his license or we just approved the cab license?
We, cab license, we've already taken care of in prior meetings. This is his license to work in Hoyoke.
Operate, right. He has to, under Chapter 98, he is required to complete a re, application to operate a taxi within the city of Hoyoke. So he needs an operator's license under our ordinances. He applies to the chief. It was denied. Under the Appeal section, he's now before us.
So the, the original application went to the chief?
Yes, sir.
Now it's in front of us.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Exactly, yep.
Wish I could have been there last night. I would have asked a question then.
No problem. Anybody else? Any other thoughts? Counsel Tomlin?
Yeah, this is an interesting meeting last night and he was very upfront with us, Mr. Cologne. And, you know, he stated that, you know, he had some problems in the past by going back sometimes 20 years, I think. And he stated, we asked him to get his driver's record, go home, print it out, pay the whatever, $6. He got the record, came down here tonight as we asked to get that information. We looked at it and, you know, and I'm looking at a person that has really, you know, wants to ride, wants to drive the cab in town and to provide for himself and his family and I think he should be given a chance to operate the vehicle.
On the motion?
All right. Without further ado, this is gonna be a roll call vote since it's on an appeal. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report and granting the appeal of Melvin Cologne and thereby granting him the taxi cab license, operator's license, and no vote is to deny it.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatna?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Soto?
Absolutely.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved Mr. Cologne's appeal. Drive safely, Mr. Cologne. All right, all the best.
Good luck.
All right, which now brings us to item number 14B. Item number 14B is a report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that the amount of $1,600 be authorized from the City Solicitor Department's litigation account as well as $102 be authorized from the Special Counsel account that was appropriated in fiscal year 2016 for services rendered in fiscal year 2015, which were unencumbered at the end of the 2015. an order that the amount of one thousand six hundred dollars be authorized from the city solicitor department's litigation account, as well as one hundred and two dollars be authorized from the special counsel account. That was appropriated in fiscal year two thousand sixteen for services rendered in fiscal year two thousand fifteen, which were unencumbered at the end of the two thousand fifteen fiscal year end. Have considered the same. Recommend that the order be approved. Councillors McGee, Leahy, Tomlin, Bacon, and Jordane.
Make a motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt the committee report, and pass its first reading. Under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yes, in essence, this is not uncommon. In essence, towards the end of the year, you'll receive bills that come in after the fiscal year. So it's paying prior year bills with this year's money. That's how we usually call it. So one is for sixteen hundred for consultant fees. That came in on June twenty-fifth, and then another one for a hundred and two dollars for Buckley and Richardson, which is the law firm, which is one of, make it clear, one of their bills that'll be coming forward to us. They do have an invoice that shows bills that'll be coming in later that are roughly fifteen hundred dollars. What this is applying towards is the Suffolk Street parking deck. It's in mediation. I guess the concrete is not as good as they like to use, so we have to go in and make them do the job correctly. So that's why this is costing us.
Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved?
Pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley?
Nope.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of allowing this use of this year's money to pay last year's bill, and no vote is to deny it.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatna?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Soto?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved that authorization. Ida number fourteen C is a report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred a communication from the treasurer's office requesting a list of parcels to be approved for auction. Have considered the same, and recommend that the communication be referred to the DGNR Committee. Councillors McGee, Leahy, Tomlin, Bacon, and Jordane.
Make a motion to receive and refer over to DGNR?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt the committee report, and refer it over to the DGNR Committee. And Counsel Bartley can't wait to get ahold of this. Counsel Bartley?
Motion to suspend. Can we take twenty-five up with this as well at the same time?
Second.
Thank you.
Order twenty-five. Motion to suspend the rules to take up agenda Ida number twenty-five, which was introduced by Counsel Bartley at this time as well. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Ida number twenty-five reads, orders that the Hoyoke City Council, in accordance with section two dash three forty-nine of the Code of Ordinances, vote to approve the list of properties for auction as previously communicated to the city council by the acting city treasurer on August the fourth, two thousand fifteen. Motion, I believe therefore, would be to also send that to DGNR, correct?
Well, sorry. Second.
Okay.
So moved.
So that motion has been made and seconded. Counsel Bartley, do you have another opinion of that?
I was going to make a friendly amendment. I motion that we approve this tonight.
Second.
Okay. And we have the list of the properties?
We do, sir.
Got it in August.
Okay.
I can read them off, if you, I can, well, they're provided in August. I'd be happy to read them off.
I have questions, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I have time to ask them this evening.
Counsel McGivern? All right. Counsel McGivern has questions, and generally, under the professional courtesies, we tend to go that direction. Is there no strenuous objections?
I'll draw, I'll draw. I can't wait for the questions.
Okay. Um, so, motion on the floor at this point is to receive Ida number twenty-five, refer it to DGNR, and to adopt committee report fourteen C and refer that over to DGNR. Yes, sir?
Now, one point of order I do have, Mr. President, and I just wasn't clear. So we do have a list of seventeen, which I won't read, Danny, but just, okay, there is some, some talk I heard from Marcos's office that they wanted to add some others to this list. Now, I don't know if they can do that. Can they just do, they have to come back to the full city council, we have to send it back to committee, but I just want to be, I want to be clear on that. So I don't know how else we can be clear unless we ask Attorney Cunha-
Motion to suspend?
On that one.
Second.
Okay. You feel prepared, Kara, on that question? Okay. Motion, motion has been made and seconded to suspend the rules to allow the department to address Counsel Bartley's question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Kara, Counsel Bartley has a question, saying that Mr. Marrero would like to add on a few additional properties.
I know there's at least one, but I thought there was about five more that he wanted to add to this list, Kara?
Well, the-
With the treasurer's approval?
Well, yeah, that was going to be my first point, is the ordinance, and this is in regards to tax title properties, so those-
They'd all be in, yes, same thing. They'd all be in tax title.
And under the, the ordinance specifies that a list through an order has to be submitted to the council. So if there are prop, it would be the subject of a separate order at this point.
Okay, that, all right, that's-
I think that answers that.
Yep, answer that.
Counsel McGivern?
Kara, the, the ordinance, the way, if I remember correctly, and please help us out, is the treasurer submits a list of tax titles that aren't necessarily up for auction, and then the order filed by the city councilor at some point is for the ones that the treasurer or economic development or mayor wishes to go out to auction with the treasurer's approval. So we, even though we get notification of these properties, the part to deem them or approve them for, for auction is a separate vote?
Right. The ordinance, I think, it's that the treasurer submits the list through the order of the properties, and it, it could be the properties that are eligible for auction, or the properties that the treasurer's already determined are going to go through auction, and the council has to approve, has to approve that.
And the reason we do that is because occasionally, a property may be better off going the route of thirty B, or maybe controversial, such as One Cabot Street.
Uh, I mean, that was the rationale behind, the ordinance is why, and that was the rationale behind the ordinance.
Because I think, Mr. President, the vast majority, and I would normally go along with Counsel Bartley's request, but the vast majority of these properties, we want to see them back on the tax rolls. But occasionally, the treasurer can't determine what comes to us and doesn't come to us once the tax title is, is advanced, or whatever we call that, once it's taken in tax title, the treasurer has to notify us. And then the determination of what route to go, I think, is partly up to us and partly up to the mayor. But I think it's important that we review each of them, because in the past, we've had issues with One Cabot Street, still have a question in front of us, and there've been other properties that were determined that it would be better for the mayor to negotiate a price and then come to us.
Okay. I thought I saw a hand up here. Counsel Alexander?
Kara, understanding that it's the treasurer that generally generates the list, you know, and that it comes through an order, and that's how it gets in front of a committee, committees amend orders all the time. Is there something preventing us from amending that order to adjust the list if it's the will of the committee and the treasurer and everybody involved? Is there some reason we can't just add a couple of properties to the list in committee?
And I guess if it's-
Treat it under the same order, so we don't have to go through another two-week cycle?
And I guess the treasurer, you know, the treasurer is the tax title custodian. This is an extra step that the council has added going above and beyond any requirements of state law, so, uh, I don't know.
So these are things that are already in tax title. The treasurer has said, we'd like to add these to the auction list. If the will of the committee is, yes, that it makes sense, as opposed to some of the points that Counsel McGivern made, where certain properties, it doesn't make sense, and we pull them out, I don't see any problem with just amending the order. So in which case-
I get, yeah.
Whatever additional five properties can come in.
I guess my concern would be that, I don't know if the council has the authority to unilaterally decide to add a property to that when it's under the treasurer's control.
It would be at the request of the treasurer.
If the treasurer approved, I guess it could be done that way. I think the better way, if there's additional properties, would be through a separate order.
Anyway. Thank you.
Very good.
Yep, the motion to DGR, I guess.
Yep. Motion is to adopt the finance committee report, which is to refer that item to DGNR, and then the other item is to receive Ida number twenty-five and refer it to DGNR. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Ida number fourteen D. Ida number fourteen D is a report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred a communication from the auditor's office regarding the Gendara lease. Have considered the same. Recommend that the communication be received. Councillors McGee, Leahy, Tomlin, Bacon, and Jordane.
Motion to receive the communication?
Motion has been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report, which is to receive the communication. Under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yes, sir, just, the auditor was in there, and since we knew he was coming, we wanted to get an update on this. And really, what happened was with the Geriatric Authority shutting down and Gendara having a lease up there, came to our knowledge that they weren't paying. And so we asked Bellamy to get us an update, which he did today, and as we all know, roughly fifty-three thousand was not paid to the Geriatric Authority, which is really the city, because we now own it. So they owe us roughly fifty-three thousand. So we're trying to figure out what is our legal action to collect on that, that we can always defer over to our legal department as to what's the best course of action. I know there was some back and forth on they're not going to pay because they did some updates and all that, but maybe a separate order to have legal proceed with a collection matter, or have legal come in to address the issue. But for now, Bellamy did give us the updates. They weren't paying. They're in the rears, roughly fifty-three thousand.
Counsel Leahy?
Yeah, very quickly, as I've been saying, I've been on the record the whole time going against Gendara, having this youth detention group up there. I just didn't think it was the right fit for the neighborhood. I also thought, quite frankly, I didn't trust the Gendara group, and they didn't let me down. There's no reason for me to trust them. Bellamy gave us a nice email today indicating some numbers. Gendara owns the Geriatric Authority twenty-eight thousand for the period of May fourteenth through January fifteenth. Gendara owns the city of Hoyoke twenty-five thousand for the period of February two thousand fifteen through September two, two thousand fifteen. They have not paid the amounts listed above, the ones I just spoke about. Gendara was also served with a notice to quit by the city of Hoyoke, and they never, they just, they can't, they just didn't do anything. They stayed there. At this time, from what we're told by Bellamy, neither the city solicitor's office nor the mayor's office were involved with the negotiating of any terms of this lease, or even waiving any of these payments due, so they owe us this money. The one good news about this is they're gone. They moved out. They moved to Chicopee, so we're not going to have to put up with this. However, you know, I encourage the legal department to go after them. They're a big company. They're a company that's all over, and so, you know, let's do this publicly. Let's get them out there, and let's get the money back. Thank you.
Of course, we have the other question, which is why did it take a year of no payments before we threw them out? But Counsel Soto?
Again, everyone knows how I felt about this, this place being placed in Hoyoke and where it was located. That's near the here or there, that's the past. But I want to definitely say publicly that I expect full, fully that our law department goes after this, every single dime that's owed to the city, and I hope that it does not end up in outsourced to legal service to another company to have to defend this, that it's done in-house. Thank you.
Counsel Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sometimes I really hate it when I'm right, but this is one of those times. And again, the point being that process matters and transparency matters. This was an example of a lease that was done in the back room, found out about essentially after the fact. Everybody cried about how good it was going to be for the city, how the property would be improved, and here we are. And we'll have some legal expenses, I'm sure, before we collect the money that was so good on behalf of the taxpayers. And I think, as a matter of political process, what it speaks to is the promises that are made by politicians for transparency is a promise that should be kept. And there's a lot of us out there talking about transparency, and I think the voters are looking at who's walking the talk. And when the public's business is done in public, then the public is served, and when it's done in the back room, not so much. And this is just another example. Thank you.
Any other thoughts on this issue? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the committee report, which is to be received? Opposed? So moved. Fourteen E. Fourteen E is a report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred a financial[1488.53] Adopt it and pass its first reading under discussion. Counsel McGee.
Yeah, Bellamy's taking, uh, twenty-four hundred from this line item to account for one fifteen hundred, which is the contract services for outside auditor. So they can certify free cash. We did try to, uh, drill him as to what free cash would be. He would not give us a number because he's still working on it. So I don't have that update for you. Um, so the fifteen hundred is for that contracted service as well as nine hundred for some office chairs. Um, he said the chairs for his staff are just, you know, the, the arms are falling off. They're just, um, pretty awful. So, uh, nine hundred dollars, which then he said, if you look at the line item, it really represents from his salary, he gets paid when he shows up. He's been out ten days. Therefore, uh, this money is there to be used for other things. So I told him, thank you very much. Now, uh, it was very nice conversation. We had fun last night. Um, but really what we're trying to do is office supplies, contracted services, which we have a contract with them for certifying free cash. That's what the money's for.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of the transfer and a no vote is to deny.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatna?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Soto?
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
By your vote, you've approved the transfer request for the auditor's office. Next up is item number fourteen G, since we already took care of fourteen F. This is a report from the Committee on Finance to whom was referred a financial transfer in amount of five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars from aid to the mayor's salary to public and dignitary, uh, receptions, professional services, and employee training. Have considered the same. Recommend that the transfer be denied. Counselors McGee, Leahy, Tomlin, Bacon, and Jordan.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass first reading, to deny?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, uh, the committee report and to pass the first reading, which is to deny. Under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yes, um, the request was made, but there was no communication. There was no one, uh, from the mayor's office to represent and actually give us information as to why the transfer and what the monies will be allocated for. So it was the belief of the committee to deny it and have them come back. Maybe something's changed or they can send representation to actually tell us what all this represent because there was, there was nothing.
Because these were dollars that were cut in the budget cycle. Uh, Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, I, I got a chance to call Rory today about this issue because I was a little concerned why they weren't here. I guess he didn't know about the meeting. Um, and he also stated that the money that was...
Posted on the website.
Yeah, that was cut from this.
It was on the agenda.
Yeah.
I have a printed agenda.
Apparently, nobody was invited. He wasn't invited. Usually the, we invite the people that needed to, to come down and, uh...
We weren't invited to, uh...
Make, make excuses. I'm talking. Counsel Leahy, please.
Keep going.
Okay.
Quickly then.
Well, it's, it's interesting stuff when you hear the whole story.
Counsel Tomlin has the floor.
And, uh, he stated that actually this money was supposed to be for our, out of, uh, his budget. You say, uh, merr- merril aid. You stated that we didn't know who was let go. Well, nobody was let go. But early in the year, Tessa was, got a new job. And it was money left in her account. And actually, the money that was supposed to be transferred from her account was supposed to be for our training that we did a few months ago. Part of it that has to be paid out. Um, and Rory said it's generally, I guess, not gonna be taken care of right now or whatever. But, uh, the money was actually for the city council business that we had to, that, the training that we had here a couple of months ago, um, the diversity training. So that's basically, if he was here, he could explain it. The money was there out of the budget that was left over. It wasn't nothing that was cut. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to table it. And I believe Counsel McGee wanted to table it to get more discussion on it. But it was totally denied. So that's, that's basically the answer.
That's, that's obviously new information. That's a different story because Bob Judge said it was coming from personnel's education and training budget. That's the story we've been hearing right along, so.
Yeah, I believe it states on here too, actually, for the employee training recommend, you know. So that was basically employee training, I believe, was us.
No, no, in the mayor's office budget. Bob has his own personnel education training. I had, I actually had to fill out the form.
This is an incredible one.
But anyways, they should've came to committee and sent that to us. But go ahead, Counsel Leahy.
You know, I just wanted to agree with you. I mean, when we went through that training, which I thought was a great training, I, I was under the impression that it was coming from Bob Judge's, uh, uh, line item. Um, and I always thought the training was fifteen hundred dollars, not fifty-seven hundred dollars.
Correct.
So, um, that's another red flag right there. So now we're paying fifty-seven hundred dollars for that training?
No, fifteen hundred. And it was, Bob said very specifically, it's coming from his budget.
And, and also, I mean, I, I encourage, what I do is I look at the website on a daily basis to figure out what meetings we have. Unfortunately, last night, the webs, uh, the meeting said it was at six o'clock and the meeting was actually at six-thirty. So it's a half hour off. But nonetheless, I encourage all city departments to look at the website because they might be called in. And, uh, they should be here or send an aide.
Counsel Lisi.
Hi, I, I just want to state that I don't think it's fair to city hall employees, whoever they are, that they are required to scan the website for all meetings. Um, I think that one of the roles of our administrative assistant is to, um, take direction from committee chairs to say, who would you like to see at a meeting? Do you need them to come in person? Do you need a written letter? Um, how can we get the information that you need, um, in the most efficient and productive manner possible? Because we don't need, um, you know, city hall employees to come into meetings if it's not going to be productive use of our time and their time. Um, so I, I do think it's really one of the roles that, um, we, we highlight for our administrative assistant to reach out to department heads, uh, members of the public, professionals and experts in different fields to have them come in and give us the information that we need.
He, uh, the aide just indicated to me that he called and invited and spoke to one of the aides, not Rory. I won't use the other na- there's names, but process of elimination, uh, was in personally invited to go to the meeting, so.
Mr. President.
So, uh, Counsel Bacon.
Just as a point of order, anybody who puts an order into a committee and that's coming before the council has full leeway to give us a documentation on paper if they don't want to show up at the meeting. And I mean, Kara did a very good job of that relative to the legal fees. And I think all the committees have been very reasonable in that regard. But to just, to be approving things and it, and then through secondhand information by a phone call, I just don't think is the transparent way to do business. Thank you.
Okay, so we're now at first reading. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Pass the second reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing no, uh, hearing, excuse me, hearing none. Uh, clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is to adopt the committee recommendation, which is to deny. A no vote, uh, is to approve the transfer. Uh, clerk will call the roll.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Alexander?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatna?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Soto?
Yes.
Tomlin?
No.
Eleven yays and, eleven yays and three nays.
By your vote, you've denied the transfer and granted the committee report. And presumably, we'll be seeing something down the road here. Okay, so that takes care of our committee report section of the meeting, I believe, almost. No, we still have one more for DGNR. We had no public safety for this particular meeting, no public service. We did the first two for DGNR. We have one left, and that is item number seventeen C. This is the Committee on Development and Government Relations to whom was referred an order that the Honorable Mike Albano of the Governor's Council be invited to the DGNR committee. Have considered the same. Recommend that the order's been complied with. Counselors Bartley, McGivern, LeBron Martinez, and Valentine.
Motion to receive and adopt?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt this committee report. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
So we, uh, last night, we had, uh, Counselor Michael Albano, uh, here for about a half an hour and a lot of great questions. And, uh, I know he really appreciated it. He gave a really nice presentation talking about the position, how it represents ninety-six different communities and, um, and going through some of the important aspects of the, of the job. Not just, not just confirming judges, which I think a lot of us know. I mean, from, from the SJC down to, you know, district court level, which, believe me, their district court judges are more important than SJC judges in many respects, so. Um, but he, he talked about a cou- couple, um, yeah, how he's, they, they approve parole board appointees, industrial accident board appointees, um, lieutenant governor's a chair, it's a two-year term. One of the most important things that kind of got some committee discussion was how his body, um, approves, uh, applications for pardon. And we were just talking about second chances, I think, a few minutes ago with the, uh, gentleman who was applying for a, um, uh, license to, uh, a taxi driver license. And so, you know, he, he's had some goof-ups in his, in his life and, uh, and his driving record. And, you know, the chief, the chief dropped the hammer, but, but fortunately, there's, 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 there's an appeal process. And so I think what Mayor Mike was, was trying to say last night is that some of these folks have, um, infractions and they could date back a long time. And now there's positions, positions opening up to work probably two thousand, three thousand jobs to work at a casino, uh, down the street. They're, they're not gonna get, they're not gonna get a chance to apply for those, those jobs because you gotta have a clean record to work at a casino. So his thought was, you know, for some of these, these hardship cases, maybe the governor, um, would, would make a proposal. But again, it's the Governor's Council, um, eight-person body chaired by Lieutenant Governor, um, that approves or disapproves the governor's, um, governor's vote and that. So, uh, it was really great having them and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel McGivern.
Just, uh, quickly on the record, um, I think it was a fantastic order and, and a good conversation as the chairperson, um, Counsel Bartley pointed out of having, uh, of our, our Governor Counselor Albano down before us, an incredibly knowledgeable man in, in Western Mass. And, and showing, I think he's one of the most, when it was said last night, one of the most active governor counselors we've seen in a long time. I know Attorney, uh, uh, Marigan was along the same roads, but, uh, Mike Albano's taken it to even, even new levels. Uh, he's joined by a former Hoyoker who's been around a lot and Mr. Jubinville, too. But, uh, last night, it was a great conversation. And I'd just like to go on record to, uh, compliment all the members of the committee that made it last night. Um, DGR had, besides talking to Mayor Albano, four public hearings, as we know from, well, actually, five public hearings, a couple that are still being held in, uh, committee for, for information. And it was just an incredibly good evening. I know the rumors out there that DGR is taking over as the workhorse committee of the, uh, of the city council.
Not even close.
But we're not quite stating that ourself just yet, but we're getting there. Chairperson Lisi, looking at me?
I was gonna say, I think Rebecca would have something to say about that.
There you go.
Notice there are no committee reports from ordinance this week, Mr. President.
Doesn't mean it didn't work.
She makes up for it many times over other weeks. Counsel Lisi.
Um, you know, as I was listening to, uh, the work that we heard government and, um, I'm sorry, Development Government Relations Committee do this week, it seems that, uh, we do have two workhorses. And I'm, I'm very much grateful that, um, DGNR has really stepped up to take on some of these, um, special permits. Um, but then hearing it in contrast to, you know, the work that they do to bring in, um, you know, government relations and other, other redevelopment issues, maybe, maybe we need to outsource special permits to a separate, um, committee altogether. And it, because I think that the, the workload is becoming more equitable in this way. Um, and if you think about the, the property issues that DGNR deals with, as well as these government relations, um, Counsel Bartley has really, um, increased the capacity of that committee by doing this extra government relations work. And, and the name of the committee, um, reflects that. So it may be something that we need to explore again in terms of where these special permits are going in order to make the workload more equitable across committees.
Well, this is all part of, uh, our expanding role. And, uh, I think we're really taking things above and beyond even things that we've ever done before. And I know that one of the things that we reached out to do was to bring in a number of great dignitaries, uh, state, federal officials to come before the council. This is really unprecedented. And, uh, we've had a real strong lineup of people that have come before the city council now to share with us our, uh, different, uh, folks that we're working with in government. Was there a hand up over here? Anybody that wanted to speak? Okay, great. Uh, Counsel Bartley.
Just want to point that the next hearing's gonna be on the twenty-eighth of September at six-thirty. And, uh, I know Counsel Valentine indicated she's unable to attend. So I'm hopeful we can have a fifth member that night, um, if I may. Because one of the things on that agenda is really, I mean, Mike Albano was talking about last night. This is a property issue that I think's gonna affect the City of Holyoke for fifty-plus years. And that's the hundred ninety-nine-foot cellphone tower application to be, um, to be, uh, constructed on Smith's Ferry. And it's almost on the, it's almost on the East Hampton Town Line, but it's in the City of Holyoke. Now, that's, you know, that is Ward Seven. And, um, you know, God love them. They don't ask, they don't, you know, add much as far as, you know, business and all that. But they have, what they, but they lack in business, they add in spirit. And so, but this hundred ninety-nine-foot cellphone tower, i- it's, you know, if that alone doesn't pique your interest, um, then there's, then there's, the question mark is whether the three-hundred-seventy-foot, seventy-two-foot smokestack is gonna come down. And when is it gonna come down? So those are, those are a couple of questions we, we talked about last night. And, you know, thank goodness we had, you know, five members last night all asking great questions. Uh, really, every single person. Um, and then Jimmy was there last night, and I know you were Kevin last, last night. So everybody's asking some really great, great questions. And I think some more have to be asked. And hopefully, you'll have a chance to look at the, you know, Sprint and T-Mobile's application. And if you don't have it, I'll be happy to forward it to you. But that's, I mean, that's a decision this body's gonna make, one way or the other. And, uh, it's gonna have a significant impact long-term. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy.
I, I know we're not on the subject, but if I could, through the chair, uh, Dave, how much money are we looking for, um, to... If this goes through, how much of, uh, how much of, uh, how much money would the City of Hoyoke? Because I know, I'm guessing it's going in private property. So I'm sure the assessment of that house is, or wherever that property is, will go up. So how much will we, uh, claim from that?
Well, there, there's, uh, I, may I?
Yeah, go ahead, Counsel.
Uh, the que- question was raised offline to the assessor. But I'll, I'm gonna invite the assessor to come in on the twenty-eighth so he can answer online as to... Because I, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Delude at this point.
Okay, that's fine. I'll be at the meeting.
But, but there, there is a tax benefit.
Yeah.
The, the question mark is, is what? I, I don't, I don't know exactly.
We have to weigh it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So, uh, again, we thank, uh, our Governor's Counselor Mike Albano for coming. That was very thoughtful of him to, to give us as much of his time as he did. Is there any other discussion that we have? All in favor of adopting the committee report?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. There is no charter and rules, uh, reports for this particular meeting. We now move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Item number nineteen. Item number nineteen is, uh, introduced by Counsel Tomlin. Order that truck route, uh, truck route signs be posted along the main street area. Tractor trailers are having difficulty navigating along this quarter while making deliveries.
Have that sent to, um, DPW and the engineering department.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded that the order be received, adopt, and refer to the DPW and city engineer. Any discussion?
Just briefly, just some of the areas downtown, especially downtown with the, uh, new, new plant down there. Some of the trucks are going down and you have a lot of areas where the bridges, of course, everybody knows Lyman and Main Street, how many times we have trucks get stuck there. And there probably are some truck signs, uh, truck routes down there. But just to be better, um, visible to people because, um, seems like they're having a difficult time, uh, sometimes trying to... How do you get from point A to point B? They're not familiar with the, the landscape or the, or the bridges downtown, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number twenty is introduced by Counsel Tomlin. That the DPW and Forestry Department look into tree root issues on the properties near twenty-three, twenty-five Dale Street.
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW Forestry.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW and Forestry. Any discussion?
Just briefly, this, uh, constituent up there has a difficult time with a, with a tree on a neighbor's property. The roots are actually above the ground because as time goes on, the, the roots rise because of the, the shale underneath the ground. And they're concerned about the roots getting into their, um, pipe, sewer pipe going out into the street. And, um, I guess it's, it's on city property, the tree. And they're trying to resolve this issue, uh, with Bill Fuquay, um, in the Forestry Department. They know about it. Bill's trying to look at some kind of way that we can resolve this issue and hopefully, um, bring it forward this way. Um, we could have this taken care of. And if, if we could send that to, um, the Public Service Committee.
Copy of it?
Copy of it to Public Service.
All right, with a copy to Public Service. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item number twenty-one is introduced by Counsel Tomlin. That campaign signs be put up thirty days before the primary election and sixty days before the general election. Ordinance?
Ordinance, please, yeah.
Okay. Under discussion, uh, Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. I think, uh, Peter, I think he's, very good order. And I, I remember filing this myself probably about ten years ago. And, uh, I'm certainly will bring this up in the ordinance committee as well. But I remember, um, that, that at that time, the city solicitor was telling me it's a freedom of speech and, uh, that's the reason we couldn't do it. I agree with you. I think that, uh, having law sites up this early is just a public nuisance. However, um, I'm sure we'll find more out from the city solicitor. Thank you.
Counsel Alexander.
Thanks. Uh, first of all, with the maker's permission, can I have my name to the order?
Absolutely.
Uh, and I, I find it interesting. I just had a long conversation with Paul in the legal department about this same issue. And I was shocked. I could've sworn we had something on the books. We don't. I think I was reading some other towns' ordinances and there are other towns with it on the books. And so I was like, we have this, we have this. And no, we don't, in fact. So I'd love to get something on.
Yeah, I believe, I thought we had something also, and I know it was discussed before. This has been going on for years. Um, just like this seems like this year, there were people putting sign out, signs out in May and June. I mean, I know the pri- preliminary election, but they were putting them out really early and...
Look, come on, there are signs up for the twenty-seventeen election already.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's something to look at. I think it's something to discuss and, uh...
In other towns, too.
Yeah. Um, and I, I think a lot of people I've, I've talked to, you know, it, it puts people in a tough spot sometimes. You put a sign up or don't put a sign up. But it's not just that. But it just, I think it just clutters up the, the area. I know it happens every two years and it's part of politics. I know it happens every two years, and it's part of politics, but maybe just something to discuss and to look at and possibly take care of.
Absolutely.
Just, we did look at this recently again about the chairman ordinance would know. You know, we had on the temporary sign ordinance, we've had a number of rules on this. General holding is that you can't hold political signs to a different standard than any other form of sign. So you're just going to have to put restrictions of time, restrictions on all other types of temporary signs in the city. Just so we're aware of that. But that was the ruling previously, so.
One day first sign?
There you go. One day first sign. All, all signs in the whole city, yeah, there you go. All right, so motion on the floor, oh.
Wasn't that long ago, Mr. President, and I know you remember it, that both Chickaby and Hoyoc had ordinances that banned signs from, you know, political signs completely from lawns. And a gentleman in Chickaby made a constitutional question of it. Won the battle and was correct that it was his constitutional right. The City of Hoyoc was told that their ordinance meant nothing, but at one given year, all the candidates got together and said, why don't we honor it? Because if no one puts up a sign, there's no need to put up a sign. And that was all set into Counselor Peter Stathis changed his mind and put his signs up. And everybody put them up.
Once one does it, everybody does, yeah.
We do have a restriction on six square feet is the total size.
Size, yeah.
That's been on the books since about 94, but... Line or under? Line or under?
Put it under, right?
Line or under?
Never do.
All right, so, all in favor of referring this to ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Moving right along. Item number 22 is an order introduced by Counselor Tomlin. That the DPW and police department look into the issue of Valet Park of America concerning the booth located at the Prue Municipal Lot. Thank you, sir.
Receive and adopt, send a copy to the DPW and the police department.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to receive the order to adopt and refer to the DPW and police. And under discussion?
Yeah, just briefly, I just went over there actually to pay for my wife's parking, and the booth was gone. Last, last month and this month, there's no booth there. Last month, I think the guy was sitting in a chair right by the thing. And then this month, he was in his car, in his van, and he got me out the receipt out of a big pocket on the side of his van, who's just sitting there. So I think there's some kind of issue with the, the wiring or something, computers to go to the lots, something with the police department, some with the DPW. But I just don't see winter coming, that a person should be sitting in a car over there, although we have the, the computerized ticket booth, like where you can, you know, put your card in and whatever, and, and pay it. But just to have somebody in a van there, it just doesn't look professional. And I think it should be taken care of in some way where, you know, the police department, if, if it's an issue with the lines going into the parking lot or, or whatever, it's just not right, a person not having a booth to be able to work out of, so. That's, I think it's something that should be really looked into.
Okay. All in favor of adopting this order?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 23 is introduced by Counselor Tomlin. That the city engineer and conservation department look into the issues concerning the brook between 25-29 Longfellow Road.
Receive, adopt, send it to the public safety committee with a copy to the engineer and the conservation department. And also if DEP and the tie and bond can be notified about this, too.
All right, let's make sure we get all that on there. So you, we want to refer it to the public safety committee with copies to tie and bond.
And the senior, senior engineer, because we don't have a city engineer, so the senior engineer.
Who's that?
I don't know, is it Mr. Shagru, maybe?
It used to be Randy...
Someone who's up in the office that's handling things, though.
All right, so we'll just say the DPW engineer.
Acting.
Acting. Right.
And the conservation, um...
And conservation.
Can I be added to that order?
Sure.
Sure. Adding Counselor Brezner as a cosponsor. Okay.
This is an issue that's going on for a number of, number of years. And I believe talks through one of the residents up there, and, and the state is, has done their part. But I guess it seems like the city is dragging its feet a little bit in this area where the brook is. When, when they built 91, it, heavy rain, it overflows. And it's actually coming from Jarvis underneath Longfellow Road and then going out under the highway and down Beamis. But it's, it's problem with the silt, and maybe it just has to be cleared out every so often. But as Counsel, Counsel Brezner's very well aware of it. It's right next to his house, and it's very, it floods, actually, last year, it flooded so much that I got stuck there, going through there, because the water was so high. So if the city could really try to step up the pace and try to get this taken care of, because it's, it's an issue that's been going on for a number of, number of years.
I had to rescue him out of the mail truck, and I was... They're traumatizing experience, let me tell you.
Okay. All in favor of referring to public safety with the copies to the engineer, conservation, and then tie and bond? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 24 is introduced by Counsel Valentin. That a handicap sign be placed in front of 221 Elm Street for Ruben Duran.
Refer to ordinance with a copy to the commission on disabilities, please.
Yep. Motion is been made and seconded to receive. Refer to the ordinance committee with a copy to the disabilities commission. Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 25 was already taken care of. Item 26. Item number 26 is an order introduced by Counsel Bartley. That the City of Hoyoc develop and publish a Good Neighbor Handbook that includes information to help public have better access to its government. It should include at a minimum information concerning licenses, ordinances, services, and contract, contacts. The handbook should be developed in committee with each city department providing input and then adopted by the city council. We should set a goal of producing this handbook by the spring of 2016. It should be the city's goal to provide an update every two years.
Motion to receive and refer to, I, I think it should probably go public safety committee?
Public safety?
Safety or service?
Public safety. Either one. Either one, whoever wants to, whoever wants to take it.
I'll take, if public service.
Public service, we have a volunteer at public service.
Great.
Okay, so motion on the floor is to receive and refer to public service. Under discussion?
Yeah, and I just want to send copies to the, at least the DPW, HPD, the fire department, the law department, and the mayor's office, if I, if I could, Mr. President.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yep.
Could you send one to the Chamber of Commerce, too? Because Kathy Anderson did that.
Yeah, I thought Mayor Pluta had something similar, but it's kind of disappeared, and...
I would send one to the Chamber of Commerce, too, if I could.
That's fine. You're fine, you're fine.
Okay, so, so this came up to, and has brought, brought to my attention at a, at a board meeting by one of the folks that participates. And this is from the city of Springfield. It's really good, but I know Hoyoc can improve upon it greatly than what the city of Springfield has, so. But we, at least we have a template. And I'll give this to Danny, and then we can, I'll make copies. The other nice thing is that, that the gentleman who brought this in said his organization would be happy to print as many copies as, as the City of Hoyoc wants. So I thought that was a nice gesture as well.
Very nice gesture, yes.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So there, there you go.
Right. Counsel LeBra Martinez?
Yes, with, if, with the maker of the order, if I can be added on to that?
Oh, of course.
Appreciate it. I just actually had feedback from one of the people who had the hearing in regards to a better processing and information for them to be informed. Thank you.
Sure. Adding Counsel LeBra Martinez as a cosponsor. Counsel Alexander?
You can add me, too. Dave, would you support a friendly amendment to publish it in both English and Spanish?
Oh, positively, yeah.
Definitely.
I think that makes a lot of sense. Yep.
So amended, whatever.
Thank you.
Adding Counsel Alexander, and we'll also put in a friendly amendment that this should be published in both Spanish and English. All in favor of that amendment?
Mr. President?
Just one second. All in favor of the amendment to publish in both languages?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Counsel Tomlin?
If maker of order could add my name, too, I'd be happy to, to sign on with that on, on that very important issue.
Okay. Very good. Counsel Bartley, without objection, I'll add my name, too, as a cosponsor. Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of receiving, referring to public service with a copy to the major departments that were articulated by Counsel Bartley? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 27, introduced by Counsel Bartley. That the city engineer assess, assess the installation of a three-way stop sign at Brown and Willow. Provide a recommendation to ordinance committee. If approved, order DPW to install signage.
Yeah, it's not the greatest sentence. So a cop, ordinance and a copy to city engineer.
Okay. Motion is to receive, refer to ordinance with a copy to the city engineer. Any discussion?
This is a, came right from a constituent who came to a board three meeting, and so let's see if it makes sense. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 28 comes to us also from Counsel Bartley. That the police department enforce the speed limit on Hitchcock Street. Adopt and refer to police?
Adopt and refer, I'd like to just briefly amend it if I could, because another constituent brought this up to me, if I may. Just add, how do you describe it, Joe? The, you know, Westfield Road, where it kind of bends at Roosevelt and Hillside? I just want to add that little section, too, so...
All right, how about we say, Westfield Road, where it bends near Roosevelt Ave?
All right, perfect. Yeah. I don't know how to describe, because Westfield Road's so long, I didn't want to, I just want to sort of narrow, Westfield and Roosevelt, I guess.
All right, so adding an amendment to say, Westfield Road near the bend at Roosevelt Avenue.
Yeah, okay. And, and to HPD, please.
All in favor of the amendment to add the words, add, add, Westfield Road near the bend of Roosevelt Avenue? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Also moved. All in favor of adopting the ordinance, which is to refer it to the police department? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 29 comes to us from Counsel Brezner. This is that the DPW replace or repair the sidewalks from River Terrace to Wykoff Avenue.
Receive and refer to the DPW.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to the DPW. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 30 comes to us from Counsel Brezner. That the DPW install the appropriate signage stating, local traffic only, no commercial vehicles, on Lower Westfield Road from Whiting Farms Road to Holy Family, and on Route 5 at the bottom of Lower Westfield Road. The neighborhood has seen an increase in commercial traffic.
Receive and refer, I don't know if that would be an ordinance issue?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I don't, I want to have the discussion. I don't want to just to put up the signs.
Okay, so receive, refer to ordinance or public safety, perhaps?
Well, I'd rather, if it, if it's ordinance, it has to get the signs, why don't we send it to ordinance, and Bill can come in?
Yeah. Maybe the ord, the ordinance, not just the signs.
Oh, right, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, so motion on the floor is to receive, refer to ordinance. Counsel Soto?
Of course. Yep.
Yes. Adding Counsel Soto as a cosponsor? Counsel Tomlin?
Counsel President, could you add my name on it?
Sure.
Okay, adding Counsel Tomlin on this?
Dave?
Counsel Bartley, you want to be? Oh, okay, adding Counsel Bartley on there, just so he's not lonely. All right. Okay, very good. So, motion on the floor is to take item number 30, receive it, and refer it to the ordinance committee. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 31 comes to us from Counsel Brezner. That the DPW relocate the sand pile next to the Puleat Pool and the Henry Fitzpatrick skating rink. The area where the sand is picked up poses a danger to the machinery at the rink, but also the potential of the public being struck, struck by rink vehicles as they enter and exit the rink entrances directly adjacent to the sand pile.
I'd like to receive and refer this to the public safety.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, receive, refer to public safety.
Copy to DPW?
And a copy to the DPW?
Copy to DPW.
So you can have them in.
Sure.
One other friendly suggestion is if they could put some sort of cover over the sand, because what happens is like last year, when I went over to get sand, and other people that were complaining is you have some bad ice or like icy rain, it's pointless. The whole thing is completely frozen over, and you've got people out there hammering with like the biggest shovels they can to, to try and get any sand. And people were really struggling. It was a joke, really, it was sad.
That group.
And so if they could put some sort of covered shed-type structure or something, just very basic, just to keep it so it's dry. Otherwise, it just turned into a muddy mess like last year.
Do you want to put, add that as an amendment?
Yeah, what, why don't we do that? The DPW also put some sort of roofing or sheltering over the sand pile so that it stays dry. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Counsel Soto?
Sure.
Yes, okay. Adding Counsel Soto as a cosponsor. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of referring to public safety with a copy to the DPW? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 32 is introduced by Counsel Brezner. Order that the city law department and any other city departments that feels relevant, come before the city council to update this body on any current properties and receivership, and if any intentions or efforts are being taken by the city to have blighted or abandoned properties placed into receivership in efforts to keep the many blighted properties safe.
Receive and refer to public safety with a copy to the law department?
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to receive. Refer it to the public safety committee with a copy to the law department. Counsel Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a point of information, we had had one meeting relative to the receiverships in public safety, and working with Ryan right now, because we had given them 30, 60, or 90 days to do some work in legal. And so we're due to follow up on that very item, so that'll fit in perfectly.
Okay, great. Can I be added as a cosponsor on that one?
Yeah, I'm going to like to be added, too, please.
And Counsel Bartley? Thank you. All right, very good. All in favor of sending the public safety with a copy to the law department? All in favor?
Aye.
Also moved. Item number 33 is an order introduced by counselors Jordane and Brezner. That the DPW conduct mold testing of city hall offices as soon as possible and report the results to the city council. I'd like to have an amendment to this. The mold testing has now been done. I have been sent the reports, and there has been presence of mold found. And so there needs to be a discussion about what the DPW's plan for remediation is. So therefore, I think it would be best that we have a, the order say something that the DPW appear before the city council to discuss recent mold testing, recent molding testing reports that were done by the state, and provide us what their plan is to handle the remediation plan that needs to be done from, that is recommended from that report. And I believe Bill is going to be determining that. I think this is an issue all of us need to be aware of. Presence, these, this mold testing that's been taking place in the, the city hall, as well as the annex, and impact on employees. So we need to be aware of this, so. And then I would recommend that we send that to, I think probably, public service committee, I think would probably be best. So all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Counsel Soto? Certainly, yep. Adding Counsel Soto as a cosponsor. All right. Okay. So all in favor of receiving or referring item number 33 to the public service committee?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number 34. Item number 34 is introduced by Counsel Jordane. That the mayor, oh, that the mayor fill the open, there's a word missing there, fill the open staff position in the tax collector's office, and that it be filled as requested by the tax collector. This position needs to be filled, and leaving it open is negatively affecting the operations of the office. This position is already budgeted. I would request that we receive, adopt, and refer this to the mayor.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to receive, adopt, and refer to the mayor. Counsel Soto?
Two things, I'd like to be added on to the order.
Two things. Uh, I'd like to be added on to the order, and, and again, this is the, one of the hardest working offices in this city. It's, it's ludicrous that this would be done to, to that office.
Yeah, just to refresh.
Everyone should be signing on to, to this. Get that position backfilled.
Mr. Guzman unfortunately had to come to me to say that he had an employee leave to go to another job, which is fine. Um, but when he went to go and post the job and backfill it, just, that's budgeted, just like anything else, that he was told no, that he could not fill the position. And he is really understaffed as it already is in that office, and we budgeted for that position, so we're requesting that the mayor allow him to fill this position, and there's this apparent policy now that the mayor has to approve all, you know, anything before it gets posted and such, so, uh, be that as it may, um, Mr. Guzman needs his staff to do the job of running the tax collector's office. Without this office running effectively, we do not receive the tax revenue that we need to have and to have it posted to the, there's, uh, and posted to the accounts. There isn't, there's certainly no extra staff in there, and anybody can ask David Guzman, who does a great job over there, uh, that that's the case, so.
Counselor, can I be added on to that, please?
Yeah, sure. Adding Counselor Bresnahan. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number thirty-five. Item number thirty-five is, uh, an order introduced by Counselor Jordane. Whereas, uh, Boden Village houses hundreds of city residents who are in need of additional parking and recreational opportunities for their children, be it therefore ordered that the homes, the, the housing authority please design and install a parking lot in the field area near the office at Lower Leary Drive in Boden Village. There is a significant need for parking, and this would be, uh, very beneficial to the residents. Furthermore, that the housing authority please work with the DPW and Park and Rec to design a playground area for the benefit of the children of Boden Village with a new playscape. The city should pay for this playscape, and it should be in conjunction with the new parking lot to be installed in the area of Lower Leary Drive to make a modern, beautiful area for the residents of this important residence. I would request that this be received, adopt, adopted, and referred to the housing authority, the mayor, as well as the Office of Community Development.
So moved.
Okay. And, and let me add the DPW and the Park and Rec, just to be safe as well, okay? So, uh, and that has been seconded, Counselor Bacon.
I just have a question.
Sure.
Within the context of your order, is there any possibility of an avenue where Leary Drive could be turned over to the housing authority as all the other streets within that complex are owned by that, and then they would just have control over the whole area, 'cause it's really used only by them already?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'd have to give it some thought. I'd have to talk to the Housing Commission, their opinion on it. Um, we'd have to talk to Matt Mainville, you know?
Take it as a separate order, but it is within the realm of, um, possibility.
Theoretically, yep.
Thank you.
Um, the purpose of this is twofold, this order here. One is to provide additional parking, which has been requested. The good news is that the housing authority is trying to do this, that they have applied to the state for some grant funding to do this. So it is their hope and desire to do it. Uh, the other piece is that the city, uh, has the opportunity, and the mayor is in very strong support of this order on both scores, uh, that I have spoken to him, and he's been very helpful, uh, was in terms of the playscape that we would like to use OCD, uh, Office of Community Development funding for this. And so, you know, you're looking at probably somewhere in the area of, you know, maybe fifty thousand dollar-ish, uh, to do a nice playscape, as we've done in other parks. So, uh, this could be really a home run and, uh, give there, and I know the mayor, I think, wants to look at some other areas such as Tokoniki and some of the other areas, um, as well for other play, playscape areas, so. Uh, Counselor Soto? Okay, adding Counselor Soto as a co-sponsor of this order. Okay. All right. All in favor of adopting the order?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Item number thirty-six. Item number thirty-six is introduced by, uh, Counselor LeBrow Martinez, and it says that "The city council, through the ordinance committee and Disabilities Commission, designate the current handicap parking in front of Fernandez Restaurant to patrons between eleven AM and four PM for patrons who come to the restaurant during business hours. Currently, the handicap parking is being used by tenants overnight who do not move their cars during business hours and not allowing the patrons to park. There is a total of four handicap parking spaces within the city block area for tenants' access. Fernandez's business in particular serves lunches to the elderly population, and the patrons have brought this, uh, to her attention as a concern." You would like this received, refer to ordinance?
Ordinance, please, thank you.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to receive and refer to the ordinance committee. Any discussion?
Yeah, and a copy to the Disability Commission. I think, I think it's clear.
I think so, yep. Copy to the Disabilities Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Item number thirty-seven is an order introduced by Counselor LeBrow Martinez. That three additional parking be designated and permitted from seven-thirty AM to nine-thirty PM and three PM to five-thirty PM on Dwight Street for Open Square Daycare. Their address is listed as two-thirty-three, two-forty-three High Street. But the parking is needed on Dwight Street. This parking will enable parents to safely drop off and pick up their children during the high-traffic times, when their safety would be otherwise compromised.
I'm sorry, there's a correction. Nine-thirty AM, so seven-thirty AM and nine-thirty AM, which is the drop-off, and then from three to five-thirty for the pickup.
Okay, so we'll change this, that, uh, seven-thirty AM to nine-thirty AM as opposed to PM.
And it's called a Square One Daycare. Apologize for that. I don't know how I kind of will put it.
Okay, and, uh, so we'll delete the word "open." We'll add the word "one" after "square," so it's Square One Daycare. And you'd like this referred to the ordinance committee?
Please, yes. Um, I'm hoping we can get it. Um, I did witness that myself. I even have pictures, um, in the morning that, um, I had to go by, and sure enough, people have to double-park, run inside, try to drop off the children. Uh, parkings are taken by others, and by the time the parents get there, um, and, uh, I went in and spoke to the, uh, director and it sure is an issue. She's, you know, hoping that we can get this through.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, yep. Anybody else? All in favor of referring to ordinance?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you. Item number thirty-eight. Item number thirty-eight is introduced by Counselor LeBrow Martinez, and it says that "The department responsible for meters services, come before the appropriate committee to explain the issue in the city about why so many parking meters are out of service and patrons are parking on, on them, uh, are being ticketed." Uh, I would say perhaps Public Service or Public.
Is that, is that what it will go? Yeah, that's why I didn't know which committee, so. To appropriate, whatever it means, yeah.
Copy to DPW?
DPW, yeah.
Yeah, so motion has been made and seconded to refer to the Public Service Committee and have the DPW come in to discuss the meter program and, uh, give us an update. Counselor Tomlin?
I take thirty seconds. Could I be added on to that order?
Yeah.
I, uh, I was down here last week checking on that thing with the garage with the no booth there, and somebody was outside putting quarter right on the next parking spot down where we pull in here, and the quarter wasn't going all the way. So it was broken. The next one was actually covered up with a red thing saying "out of order." The next one, he put a quarter in, it went in, but nothing clicked. It said the red light was, sign was there, it's out of order. So I think there was like three of them that were actually not working, and I, I saw him put the money in. And his wife was afraid to put, to go to the Social Security Office because, uh, she was gonna get a ticket. He said, "Oh, just park it, you won't get a ticket," but more than likely, they could get a ticket, yeah.
That, that, that is brought, brought to my attention that they've been ticketed. They say it's not being, you know, it's not working, so I still parked there, and I come back, I got a ticket. So there's several of those, um, and I counted it, in one street alone, we have six, in one block. Six blocked off, so I don't know what the deal is.
I know three or four of them weren't working down here. Like I said, one of them, I saw him put the quarter, and it wouldn't even go in, so I don't know if it was malfunction or it was just full and it wasn't taken, you know. Supposed to clean them out every so often, right?
Was he nervous that he was being followed by you or anything?
Counselor McGivern?
I came out of work one day and counted seven on Heritage Street. The, the way you know they're not working is they put a bag over it that says "no parking." That's the only time they can really ticket someone, is if the no parking bag is over the meter. So I drove around between Maple Street, High Street, uh, from Appleton Street all the ways down to Lyman Street and counted twenty-nine bags. So I called up the superintendent and said, you know, "Bill, there's twenty-nine parking meters that have been bagged as out of order." I said, "What, what's going on?" And he says, "We're having a tough time getting the parts, and we're working with the management company, and, you know, we're just trying to get it done." And I said, "Well, I understand putting a bag over them, but there are tickets that are being issued." And he says, "Well, we're gonna lose money if we don't issue the tickets." I said, "You're losing money because you're not fixing the meters." So I, I, I congratulate the order, 'cause I've, I've almost forgotten about this, and I think it's, uh, it's an important order, and we deserve some answers, because this is part of our parking scheme that pays for the ban, that pays for all the things that we do downtown in terms of parking.
Somebody's gotta pay for those mediator fees for our, uh, new parking deck.
That beautiful parking deck.
Counselor Soto? Oh!
Food's ready.
Standing, we have a standing chime anytime someone's added as a co-sponsor.
They're asking the chime, I don't know what that is.
Counselor Soto has just hit one million dollars signed on orders.
You hit your limit.
I was gonna say, that means the limit was reached. Ding!
Ding! You reached the maximum, you reached the maximum.
Put more quarters in, Tony.
All right. All in favor of referring that to Public Service?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Item number thirty-nine, introduced by Counselor LeBrow Martinez. "That the ordinance committee take up a parking issue regarding tenants living on row houses on Center and Canal Street who are being ticketed in their designated parking, and also to discuss the winter parking ban policy and how this is affecting them." Ordinance?
I guess ordinance, yeah.
Okay. Uh, all in favor of receiving, referring to ordinance?
Aye.
So moved.
Can I, can I just ask for those who've been here longer on this issue right now? Um, I had looked this up immediately when I ran off for office, 'cause this was one of the first concerns that was brought to my attention. And at the time, when Susan Egan was in office, I had to see her, because I was, been sent to too many places. I guess, back in the days, whoever knows the story about those row houses, starting on Nine Center Street, they got assigned to the specific parking that are, the guests are giving a number. And, um, it's been something that nobody knows how to give me more information, how it went about it, and, and, um, we need to figure this out, because this past two weeks, I mean, not by now, it's two weeks, two weekends ago, someone went by, and I have a copy of the ticket, as the people are sending them to me, um, um, and they got all ticketed. Uh, I don't, so I'm a little bit confused, because it's happening, um, and they're parking right there, um, regardless. I understand that when I came to see Susan back in the day, she told me that they had to have this specific sticker from the city. But I don't know how that works, because...
We'll let, we'll let Joe weigh in.
I'm sure Counselor Leacy could do it too, but it's, it's called designated, uh, parking areas for the neighborhood. The state does not allow you to designate specifically for an individual, a, a, an address or a business. But we have to do it more in general. We can do, and the, the one that we first did, it was in Ward Six, uh, across from the high school, to prevent all the on-street parking that was happening because of the high school. And we, and we allowed the neighbors, Counsel Devine at the time, had sponsored it, allowed the neighbors to get a, one decal that says they live in this neighborhood, and therefore they're allowed to park there. On Center Street, we took it a step further and said each apartment number can have two decals. And that was just to make sure each apartment had at least somewhere to park at night when they, uh, their vehicles were brought home. Some apartments had more than two vehicles. They can only get a sticker if one of their neighbors didn't need one of theirs.
All in favor of referring to ordinance?
Aye.
So moved. Item number forty is introduced by Counselor McGee. "That the Park and Rec and DPW look into installing an awning near the dog park at Community Field."
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW, Park and Rec.
Can I add my name to that, because, uh, I did the one with, uh, the water and also a bench. So we're hoping now they'll do the awning, 'cause we want the dog park is...
Yeah, I filed, I filed one for a changing table, water, and now this one came in.
And a bench, so that the people that come up can sit, too. Adding Counselor Soto? Ding! Uh, Counselor, Counselor Leahy?
I was just gonna say, um, uh, through the chair, I, I think it's a great idea that Counselor McGee has. Um, I, I bring my dog, my little, oh, uh, oh, just, oh my god, Quigley. Um, and, uh, one of the things he doesn't like up there is that the bark mulch. Uh, little Quigley's not a big fan of that bark mulch. He, uh, he's, he's over there on the concrete, uh, pilatio there with the other dogs. But I, I think that, that gets a lot of heat up there, and I think that's a great idea, so I'd like to be added on that if I could, too.
And he communicates that to you.
Yes, the Jordanes have a dog. Co, yeah.
I just want to thank Counselor McGee for filing that, 'cause one of my constituents communicated with me about that very thing.
And, and if this can go to whoever, Department, uh, DPW or Park and Rec, I think it's Park and Rec, we have that revolving account for Community Field. They might be able to take from that, from the cell tower stuff, depending on the cost. I'm just saying that might be a way to look to help cover the cost.
You and I can follow up on that later, yeah. Uh, Counsel LeBrow.
I'm sorry, I, I think, McGee, you were saying something in regards to the changing table, too?
That was filed.
That was filed already?
Just to let people know, that was filed as well, yep.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Motion is that this be received, adopt, refer to the Park and Rec and DPW, with, uh, Jordane and Soto added as co-sponsors. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So moved. Item forty-one. Item forty-one is that the DPW forestry cut back the tree branches along East Hampton Road sidewalk between Burns Way and Bemis Road.
Receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Mr. President, can you add my name to that one?
Okay, adding Counselor Alexander's name to this. Um, that the D, uh, okay, so we got this, and that the motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, and refer to DPW and Forestry. Any discussion? Counselor Alexander?
Just real quick, um, I filed another order about this a couple of years ago. It's an ongoing thing. The sidewalk between those two things gets completely overgrown with both weeds kind of encroaching and with branches and everything. And the DPW kind of like claims it's not really their road, 'cause it's like it's a state highway or something, but it's a city sidewalk, and it's gotta be kept clear, so. You just need to remind them periodically.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, just briefly, and, and I, I know this is an issue over the years, um, and the city sometimes does have that, um, it's like a tractor, and it's got the iron that goes off to the right, and that really cuts the, the brush down, um, in that area, so it's something maybe that can get there and, and take care of it with that.
Okay, very good. All favor of receiving and adopting, referring to DPW and Forestry?
Aye.
So moved. Uh, we now enter the late file section of the meeting.
Which, how many?
How many?
Six orders.
Oh.
Six orders. Uh, first up is late file A, introduced by Counselor Alexander. Uh, "Whereas the sufficient number of residents of Reservation Road having fi, filed a petition that the DPW install, install speed humps on Reservation Road." So we had that earlier.
Uh, we had the petition to ordinance, so this is just, this is the order to make it happen, yeah.
Okay, great. So motion on the floor is receive, refer to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. B?
Can we send a copy of that to the city engineer, because we have an ordinance that says that the engineer has to
Give a report.
Designate where it's gonna go.
I think that's in the order, actually, that the city engineer do something.
Didn't make it.
Didn't make it in.
Not up to your normal high standards.
Yeah, I thought I put that in there.
All right, so, uh, please send a copy of A to the city engineer as well, please, madam clerk. All right. Thank you. And that now brings us to late file B, which is introduced by Counselor LeBrow Martinez. "That the city council, through the ordinance, through ordinance and DPW or appropriate committee, uh, to put up signs of something zone." I've never seen that word before. Zone. Around Monta Della Rosa.
School zone?
Oh, school zone.
Drugs, drugs-free or drug-free? Okay, so you want signs, put up signs for a drug-free zone around Monta Della Rosa?
A drug-free school zone, I think was the intent.
All right, beautiful. So it's handwritten, that's why. So, um, so you wanna send it over to the ordinance committee or just write to DPW to put "drug-free zone"? I don't think, I don't know, do we, I don't think we need an ordinance, right? It's supposed to be a drug-free zone.
Close enough to the school, yeah.
It's just sort of educational, right? Sign?
Uh, Mr. President?
Yeah, you put them up, I, I think.
Um, I think part of the issue is there are no signs that are designated as a school zone, which automatically makes it a drug-free zone, which automatically increases the penalties and stuff, so we need the school zone signs, too.
Okay.
So if that's a friendly amendment.
All right.
Yep.
I still, I still think it requires ordinance.
We're gonna have to suspend the rules to take a final action if we're gonna adopt this, this evening. So a motion would be to suspend the rules to take final action. All in favor of that?
Aye.
So moved. Motion is to amend to put signs up to say "school zone" and "drug-free zone."
Yep.
Right, thank you, yes.
All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Can I add my name to that order, please, too?
Adding Counselor Alexander's name to this. Okay, and on, all in favor of adopting this and referring it to the DPW? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Late file C, introduced by Counsel LeBrow Martinez. "That the city council, through the ordinance committee, put up signs warning drivers driving by Monta Della Rosa that it's a school zone."
Oh, well, there we go.
Ooh, I think we got that one now, right? Or do you wanna just adopt it anyways? Okay.
Adopt and refer.
Yeah, all right. So, uh, motion is suspend the rules to take a final action on this?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Um, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt, refer to the DPW. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All set. Late file D. Late file D is introduced by Counsel LeBrow Martinez. "That no parking signs be, uh..."
That are no sign, that are no parking sign.
Be permitted in the circle in front of twenty-five Maple Street, near Pulaski Park, that reads "no parking between drop-off and pickup from eight AM to three PM." So this is the school area, you're saying, no...
By the road re, this all beca, this all came out of, um, after, I met with her this morning in regards to the conversation last night at the hearing with the safety issue, and that is one of the issues that they're having, to try to see if they can, um...
Get no parking in there?
Get no park, yeah.
During the school hours, okay.
The drop-off time.
So you're referring this to ordinance, right? 'Cause we need an ordinance on it.
Yeah.
Okay. So all in favor of receiving, referring to ordinance?
Aye.
So moved. Late file E is also introduced by Counsel LeBrow Martinez. "That a pedestrian crosswalk, uh, lines be painted at the crosswalk in front of sixty-seven St. Colby Drive."
That's in front of the school.
So you, I assume you want final adoption of this, 'cause...
That, motion to suspend.
Unless it's already a crosswalk.
Existing crosswalk?
Is it an existing, and it just needs to be repainted, or is this new?
There's nothing there.
Okay, so you're gonna need to send this to ordinance, then, right?
I think it's the intersection, though.
Sorry?
The intersection?
Yeah.
Intersections all have crosswalks and all should be painted. We don't need an ordinance for an intersection. We need an ordinance when it's in the middle of the...
Engineer usually likes to...
No, I'm sorry, it's in the middle, it's in the middle. It's not right at the intersection, in the middle from the parking lot to the other side.
Engineer usually likes to review all that stuff, though, anyways. Counsel Shatner?
I filed this order back, I don't know when, but we already voted on it, and it's with the city engineer.
Okay, so this has already been done?
Yep.
Is that the one? Okay, so I'll follow up.
Just haven't done it yet, but it's, it was approved and everything. Went to ordinance.
So you wanna give this leave to withdraw?
Leave to withdraw. I'll follow up on that, yeah.
Motion's been made, seconded to give leave to withdraw. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Late file F, our last one, by the way, is introduced by Counsel Leacy. "That the city council explore the potential of alt, of alternate side or one-side parking on Brookline Avenue during the winter months, November, December through April. Residents are raising concerns about emergency vehicle access after snow plowing." Can I add my name to this? I got a couple phone calls on this, actually.
I have my name, too, 'cause I got a phone call yesterday.
I got a, uh, phone call. We all did.
This is regarding Brookline Avenue. It's talking about, uh, how we're gonna handle snow plowing, emergency vehicle parking, all of these issues on Brookline Avenue.
Kevin.
Okay. Uh, Counsel McGee?
We've, I filed this order before, um, of which DPW says they can on smaller streets like Brookline, or I think another one is Camby, which where a snowbank piles up, they can put signs throughout the street, making it one-way parking for that set timeframe. One of the issues in committee when it was brought up was if you make it one side from November to whatever.
April, yeah.
March.
March.
And there really isn't a snowstorm, then you're, it's counterproductive. That was one of the arguments by, by Bill. Um, it has been brought up before. I received the same phone calls everyone else received. So they can put up signs, that's one, was one of the compromises. If, if not doing it that way, then it is putting up an ordinance or a sign saying "from November to March, you cannot park on one side." It'll be one-side parking. So just to let you know, that is the history of it.
That's good information. Counsel Leacy, do, you wanna go the direction of ordinance or public safety, or what do you recommend?
Let's have a public safety discussion, um, because it, I do remember this issue being hashed out and these comments being made, and so if we're not gonna go the ordinance route, let's have the conversation with, uh, public safety if we...
We can take it from there.
Yep, if we wanna go from there, that's fine.
Order introduced by, uh, Leacy with, uh, Jordane, Tom, and Shatner as co-sponsors. Sending over to the Public Service Committee, excuse me, Public Safety Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. That's the end of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We stand adjourned.